Good evening, folks. This is March 3rd. As a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I am the Chair for Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated and together are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy.
Present.
Thank you. George Morse.
Yes.
Hello, George. Leslie Matthews.
Yes.
Hey, Leslie. Woody Knight.
Here.
Get your coffee?
Right here.
All right, perfect. Mary Stone.
Yes, present.
Thank you. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Tip.
Here.
Great. Emily Noble.
Here.
Hey, Emily. Speakers, presenters, and agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Chris York.
I'm here.
Great, Chris. William D. Francesco.
He's muted, but he's here.
Okay, hello, Bill. Steve Sawyer.
Here.
Hi, Steve.
Hi.
Vincent?
Oh, hi, sorry. I didn't hear that. I'm here.
Hey, how are you? Joe Strommer? Joe, the architect?
Looks like he's not here yet.
Okay, Austin Drake from Joe, the architect?
Also not here.
Okay, Michael D'Angelo.
Also not here yet.
Okay, Tom Z.
And he's not here yet.
Okay. Phil Henry?
He's not here yet.
Great. Douglas Chances?
Not.
Drew?
Not here yet.
On camera.
He's also not here yet.
We'll just close the meeting now. Just kidding, folks. Okay, good evening. Now, this is March 3rd, 2021, open year, the open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency on the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend the public gatherings and as such, the governor's orders suspends, excuse me, suspends the requirement of the open law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which can be found posted with the agenda materials for allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the planning board section of the town's website, identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056 or by calling 929-2056099 and entering the meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees participating by video and/or telephone conference. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention before you have been called. So just some ground rules here before we start to the first item agenda permit to convey some ground rules for a clear and effective conduct of our business into ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, as a chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. For attending except board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone, which is the asterisk six star six to toggle to mute and unmute on your computer, the mute button when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that will help generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that any video participants can see you and you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With your guys to public comments, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function for video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the yellow hand that appears. If you see your hand, click the participants button. A list of participants will open and display on the at the bottom of this participant area, you'll see an option to click on the raise hand button. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participation list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your keypad. I will then allow questions and comments for members of the public who have raised their hands in order in which they have listed. The system will keep track of who raises raises their hand first. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask the question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. I will then continue down the list of the raised hand column and again afford the applicant participant representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical electronic submission of questions or concerns, they they will and again, the participant applicant representative will be afforded the opportunity to if the issues have not yet been raised. Finally, each vote will be roll call in vice chair. Murphy will make sure that I do that with a kick under the table. Okay. Let's see, just some opening remarks. It is 6:37. We have a busy agenda type from what I see from Martha's agenda. We start at 6:30. We're going to conclude at 9:30 if we're lucky. So we have a number of things to get through tonight. So we will start our public hearings. Our number of, there are several public hearings and we're going to try to stick to 30 to 40 minutes maximum if possible out of courtesy to the applicants, the speakers, members of the public in attendance, as well as board members. Okay, so Martha, we have a couple of minutes to start items on the agenda. And we can start with submission appearance first. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so this Millennium Engineering submission of an A and R plan for proposed lot C at 131 Newbury Turnpike, R 36 Lot 26, I'm sorry, Lot 23 owner applicant. Stillway Storage, Newbury LLC, doing business as Newbury Self-Storage, William D. Francesco manager. Okay, Chris, I think you have the floor, sir.
All right, we bring up the screen here. We'll be ready to go. All right, so I am here with Bill D. Francisco with the Stillway Storage, Newbury LLC. He is proposing to chop off a piece of his property for a approval not required subdivision. We're calling it Lot C. This is just to the south of his entrance to his site with chopping off a four and a half acre piece of parcel, cut over almost three acres of upland at 431 feet of frontage. And that still leaves his parcel with over 49 acres. And I guess, pretty simple. I don't have much else to add on this. Taking questions from the board.
First off, Martha, do you have any questions as to this proposal?
I don't. It's been reviewed a couple of times. I think all the comments have been addressed. Chris, you might want to just point out the the amount of upland on the area and show where the areas of ledge are, where the access is, and also the fact that there is a guardrail there that that does go in front of the wetlands, but stops short of that access.
Sure. I'll zoom into the bigger scale here. So there is just a guardrail along into the road that stopped about a little more than halfway into our site. So we're showing the proposed, the proposed access at site would be somewhere away from the guardrail. We have 2.89 acres of upland, 4.5 acres total. The assessors gave us a new address. It would be 141 Newbury Port Turnpike, that bar 36, what, 23B? And we have, do we have any ledge out here that we've found? But we do have some kind of dashed dotted areas, areas of slopes for slopes greater than 15%.
And Chris, have you had any discussions with Mass DOT about a curb cut here?
Nope, not yet. I imagine it'd be similar to build site next door. You know, they may require a, you know, small turning lane like Bill has. It's pretty, it's it's flat. It's route one is flat out there and it's straight. So I don't see any issues with site distance or anything like that, but that's something that DOT will comment on at some point when the time comes and we go before them.
Thank you.
And where telephone poles are, just for curiosity, are there two there?
Yeah, there's one, two, three, four, five telephone poles.
Okay.
Ultimately, the site, the entrance would probably come in in the year.
Between a couple poles.
We won't, we won't take any, we couldn't take any poles out. We won't take any guardrail out. Keep it, keep it pretty clean.
All right, so it'd be coming in just south of the guardrail. It's just south where it ends, probably.
I'd imagine so, yeah.
Any other questions, Martha?
No, I don't.
Let me see if there's any questions from board members. Larry, sir, do you have any questions on this in our right now?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Leslie, do you have any questions on this?
No, I don't.
Okay, George, do you have any questions on this A and R?
I do not.
Wonderful. Woody, do you have any questions on this A and R?
I just saw a clarification. It's hard to see on the plans I have here and on the screen. Would you point out where the upland is again?
Upland in all of this area in here.
Okay, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Woody. Mary, do you have any questions or concern?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, wonderful. That being the case, I would encourage a motion to endorse this submission.
I move we endorse it.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any discussion on the motion? Larry?
No discussion.
Okay, George?
No discussion.
Thank you. Leslie?
None.
Great. Woody?
No discussion.
And Mary?
No.
Okay, I don't have any discussion either. Okay, then on the motion, how vote, how say you, Larry?
Yes.
Great. George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Perfect. And let's cheers in favor as well. Okay, Martha, what else needs to be done with this now that we've had this motion and it's been endorsed?
So you and I will just need to find a time to, for you to sign the Mylar and the Form A and then I'll coordinate getting that back to the applicant.
Wonderful. Anything else for us, Chris? Nope, that's it. Can is Bill have anything?
Bill, you're muted.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Great, wonderful. Thank you very much then. Okay, so we're supposed to be starting at 6:45 on our public hearings and I think we are within 20 seconds of that happening on time. And you know, that's like an on time departure. So I'm going to start reading to to start the process, I think. This would be starting a public hearing continuance for a public hearing site, plan review applicant, application to and eight R Old Point Road map U 02 lots 154 and 155 owner applicant. The Cottage Commercial LLC of Vincent Godin manager continued from February 3rd, 2021. So just for record, we did have a sidewalk on the 22nd of February. It did kind of snow and rain on us a little bit, but we had an opportunity to visit the internal structure of what would be the restaurant bar area. We also added an opportunity to walk the site, we were able to see the sightlines, had an appreciation of a home that's currently that would be raised as well as a telephone pole that would be moved, also an appreciation of where the adjacent roadway is and vary that would be put between the roadway. What other points am I missing? Larry, any other comments from that walk?
No, no, I think it was, you know, it was very helpful. But no, I don't have any other comments.
Okay, Woody, any other comments?
No, I don't know.
None.
Okay, Mary?
No.
Okay. Martha, where do we stand with revised plans and stormwater report that was submitted to the board?
Those were submitted last Thursday night. I got them on Friday morning and so those have been distributed to the board and we did get to get a second peer review letter from Joe Sirwodka today. I don't know if the applicant wants to review, review those drawings, the revisions.
Okay, Steve, do you want to kick us off here?
Sure. Steve Sawyer, design consultant here with the, with Vincent Godin, the applicant, and I believe Joe's on now, the architect Joe and also Mike of MDLA, the landscape architect. I think what I'll do is I'll just quickly share my screen and go through some of the changes and and some of the items.
Okay, I just have to, okay, you should be all set now.
All set?
Yes.
There we go. Okay, great. So I think one of the major items is up in this, this corner
at the intersection of Old Point Road and Plum Island Boulevard. Originally, we were pulling, we were kind of straightening. As you can see, here's the center line. We were kind of bending, following the center line and sort of we were encroaching into the public right of way, which it just created problems permitting wise and it was simpler just to maintain, maintain any improvements to our property only. So that was a major items. We pulled that, pulled all improvements back to the property line here with the new, with the revised plans and maintain, basically maintain the full, the full entry width here at Old Point Road. We are still proposing a solid white striped line to designate the travel way versus any pedestrian way on the edge of the road from Plum Island Boulevard, Boulevard wrapping all the way around the corner. So that's, that was a major change to the plans. As far as stormwater, there were some comments regarding directing water to the rain, the each rain garden. We revised the grading to ensure that all water flows in the direction, the majority of the site flows to this rain garden along Plum Island Boulevard. There was some comments regarding pretreatment, which we are now providing. Also, there's a little shim, we provide a little shim at the entry here to direct this, you know, to pick up the stormwater instead of flowing directly into Plum Island Boulevard. It now gets directed to this rain which over, eventually it will over top. The sole purpose of this is water quality treatment. So we get remove all sediment TSS and provide treatment prior to flowing into the, the catch basin on Plum Island Boulevard. You know, a key component here is, you know, this is a redevelopment project, but for all intensive purposes, we've, we've met the full compliance of, of the stormwater regulations, DEP stormwater regulations with our drainage, the drainage improvements there, whereas right now, currently, there's no improvements. I think another comment at the last meeting with the planning board and also with the peer review comments with snow storage. One key item is if the restaurant were to be open in the, in the winter months, it'd only be about 25 seats or so. So as far as any of the parking requirements, it's severely diminished. So basically, we have this whole, basically have this whole right side, right bay here to push snow. We have this whole area here on the, in the, in the gravel area here to store snow. So there's given the, the reduced demand in the winter for parking, we have ample, ample space to store snow on the existing, basically within the existing parking area and not impacting either the rain gardens or any of the landscape planting around the property. So we feel that's, that's very important. There was a comment, you can barely see here, this corner, this little, the red and red. There's comments, comments about this are possibly backing out into Plum Island Boulevard, which we do not. We actually, pretty much the movement is solely within our property, backing and then pulling forward and exiting the parking space. I think of no, you know, many, you know, many of the establishments, the commercial establishments, it's basically pull in parking where they back right out into Plum Island. So this is a a substantial improvement to many of the businesses surrounding the area as far as the operation of the parking on this property. So that, that's a major improvement to, to the site. Also, there was a comment regarding, peer review comment regarding the exit here. So instead of running from gravel right onto Plum Old Point Road, we've provided a petuminous apron here. So with that, what that'll do is if there's any sediment or such on the tires, it'll tend to wear off on this petuminous area prior to exiting the site. And then any, it's, this is tilted back, sort of graded back a bit. So we direct the stormwater into this small rain garden area here where we get our water quality treatment and then it would just over top and bleed off the site and then down the gutter line. So any, any stormwater leaving our property is, is all treated to meet the DEP TSS stormwater quality treatment requirements. So that's, that's the major improvements here. I think one thing, there was a comment regarding site distance. Now, did that, did that jump to the new view?
It did.
It did.
Okay, great. Fabulous. I think, okay.
So there was a comment regarding site distance, looking down, they were worried about planting on this corner obstructing view. So we actually, as you pull to make a, either left or actually would be a left or a right, you have clear site distance, basically from the property line, you know, we can see pretty much all the way down Plum Island Boulevard. We're assisted there. There's a little bit of bend to the road. So that helps, that helps with our site distance, that slight bend. So we have ample site distance at, at this location as far as safety goes. And so, you know, it's just a very, I think the DPW director agreed that as far as the operation, the one way operation through the site, he thought was a good thought rather than, than have cars entering and leaving at this point. So everything runs through the site and and out onto Old Point Road where they, you know, probably many of the, many of the movements here would probably old point and then a right back out Plum Island Boulevard towards Newbury Port. So that simple right hand turn is, it works very well. So I think, I think one, one key item is with the, the peer review letter came back pretty much clean. We addressed all comments. One of the, one of the items he mentioned was that we didn't do, we didn't do any test pits at these two locations. And I think one item that I, I provided one test boring that had been done previously with the groundwater elevation. I hadn't provided, there was a plethora of borings throughout the site with many observation wells with groundwater readings and the readings were all below, actually below 3.5, they ranged from like 3.5 to four and a half feet below grade. I think there was a reading taken in the winter. I think it was in January when the wells were installed and then there was a reading, take, read and reading taken in. It was taken in May. I think it was sometime in May during spring. And I think most of the groundwater here is, is more a tidal influence than anything, given the sandy nature and you're surrounded by the ocean. But the, for all intensive purposes, the groundwater was never within three and a half feet of grade. The deepest are sumps here in our rain gardens are only 12 inches below grade. So we have, it's ample proof that, okay, we don't have an issue with groundwater interfacing with the bottom of our rain gardens. And I had sent, I had sent Joe that entire boring package along with the locations and actually, he thought, what I had offered, said, hey, instead of running out there and disturbing the site, it would make sense if we could just do a I think we're all pretty confident to the fact that groundwater is not an issue. And then the soil material is all sandy by nature where all the borings indicated a coarse, coarse, coarse to medium sand that perhaps that we pay the test pits to a couple of test pits with a certified soil about when we begin the demolition, when we have heavy equipment on site. And then we provide, we'd report back to Martha and to Joe the results of that, of the test pits, just to confirm, okay, we're all set here. And I think Joe's, Joe sent an email today agreeing, given the nature that this is a redevelopment project and the material provided that, I think he felt comfortable proceeding in that manner rather than, okay, let's go do a test pit and, you know, now and delay, delay the process. So I think, I think that was really the only, the only item regarding the peer review that was left undone or unaddressed was those test pits. And Joe sent an email today saying that he agreed with the fact that I guess it would be up to the board, but he was comfortable with the fact that we could condition it that the test pits be done for these two rain gardens during demolition. So I think that's, that's basically it. Now, I think there were some changes regarding the landscape. So maybe I can actually scroll down to the landscape plan if we like. And then, I don't know, Mike, if you want to jump in?
Hi, this is Mike Rettenmeyer, landscape architect at MDLA, Michael D'Angelo Landscape Architecture, and I'll be speaking on behalf of our team today. So we'll just, there's just a couple landscape items at the intersection of Old Point and Plum Island. We pulled in all our proposed planting. The wood piers, all of that's now within the property line, same with the, this raised sand areas and all the associated planting. So it's very similar design as to what was previously submitted, but just within our property line. And then we did update some of the planting in our, the bio retention areas to handle situations where there may be salt, saltwater exposure. So that's also been updated. And then Steve, if you don't mind, jump into the lighting plan. The on the western exit on the old point, go up one sheet there. We updated the lighting attributes to provide safer light levels at that exit. And then again, modified the bothered lighting at the sand pit area near the intersection. Again, just to work with the shift of everything inside the property line. And then on the last sheet here of our details, we were asked to provide some planting details. So you could see our shrub, ground cover, typical plantings. We provided a permeable paver detail for our pavers that allow visitors from the parking lot to get to the the barn. And then there's a few photos in the bottom right, Steve of some of the proposed fencing, the six foot high fencing, as well as the sand, the three foot sand dune fencing that's going along Old Point and Plum Island Boulevard. And those are our, those are our updates.
Actually, there was one other, I guess, one other item regarding the, let's see, I think it's here. So one other item regarding this, the sand, the planted sand berm around the property, there was concern about it basically holding together and blowing away. So what we done, actually, what Mike did was we provided a planting curb, a granite planting curb to lift it up. And then it's just a very subtle slope here. And then also what we do, hopefully our dune grass will be a little taller than what we show here. But also what we do is put a coconut fiber to hold everything in place to get, until we get a good root mass here to hold, hold this all together. It's a very subtle, it's not a steep slope, it's just a very subtle berm that will provide that rolls up and then rolls back into our, our sand play area here as part of the, inside the restaurant. So I think that was a concern, I think, of the planning board and also Joe had a concern regarding that with the we're trying to create this, this berm area that the sand would blow around. I think we'd mixed a little, maybe a little bit of clamshell particulate to make it a little stickier and keep it all, keep it all together. But we're confident that with the, with the coconut fiber fabric and holding it in place and then with this planta berm, this actually provides a nice segregation also from the roadway and our project, a granite curb, planted curb around that area. So that's another enhancement that we've made based on the planning board and, planning board and peer review comments. And I think I think that covers it. I don't, as far as architecture, I don't believe there was any comments or questions regarding the architecture. There was some coordination issue where the landscape had this, had the movable trailer slid back. Now, we've, this has been coordinated with this move forward, move forward and coordinated with the, with the landscape architecture and architectural plan. Unless, unless there, Jody, Jody, was there any changes to the architectural plan?
All right, thanks. The, the only thing that we, we added based on comments
All right, thanks. Um, the, the only thing that we, we added uh, based on comments from uh, from the last meeting was a hand sink at the uh, at the outdoor toilet area on the, on the back area of the shed, so that, um, so that there's a hand sink there.
Oh, here, okay. All right.
Uh, one, one other thing, there was a couple of things added. Uh, this is Vincent. Um, there was questions about where like the propane tank would go and, and, and so you can show on the top right there, there's the 500 gallon propane tank that's going to be fenced in as well as for the proposed fire pit. Um, after some discussions with the, with the fire department, we felt it would be the safest route to go with a, a hard line uh, propane as opposed to having to swap out tanks. And so we're proposing a tank right next to the shed that is going to be uh, permitted and and inspected annually by the fire department uh, that will connect directly to the fire pit. Uh, I guess we learned that the um, the blue in on the island also has, has some, some uh, propane fire pits that, that the fire department has approved and does inspect on an annual basis. So we've, we've gone through that uh, discussion with them to make sure that, that it is something that uh, they would be okay with.
So I, I think that, that wraps it up. I know you guys have a busy evening. We don't want to take up, um, I think we tried to expeditiously, expeditiously cover it and, and uh, present the new information. I believe, uh, believe that, that covers our presentation.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, uh, Martha, do you have any initial comments or concerns before I have the board start to ask their questions?
Uh, not, not right now, no.
Okay, great. Uh, Steve, I'm actually gonna have you pop your uh, first page back up just so board members can look at that if they particular questions. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
This one?
Uh, I'll let you know in a sec. Yep. And can you in, in make that a little bit larger?
Yeah.
Beautiful. That's great.
Okay, I can pan around as needed.
Okay, uh, so I'll start first. Um, Larry, sir, do you have any questions?
Just uh, just briefly, um, I'm not sure I completely understand the issue around the uh, rain garden test pits. Is that just to determine the groundwater level?
Yeah, typically you want to, you want to make sure that they drain dry between, between rain events. Um, so typically with such a shallow feature, it's really not, I've never, I've, I've designed rain gardens without test pits in the past, just because you typically, they're only eight inches to 12 inches deep. And you're really not relying on it, you know, you're not, you're not using, utilizing the infiltration rate for stormwater peak attenuation here. Granted, it's all sandy soils, but the, the um, you know, the walk runoff rate through the rain garden slowed down just for the fact that you provide 24 inches of soil media uh, for the water to, for the water to uh, be, it flows through the uh, flows through back into the groundwater.
So if I understand your comments earlier, it's something you intend to do during demolition?
Yes.
I'm wondering if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead. I interrupted.
No, I was just gonna say, if, if you should uh, have any surprises, does that mean you're gonna have to come back before the board?
Yeah, I, I guess we would. If we, if, if for some reason the groundwater was, was less than than 12, if we were putting our basins into the groundwater, we'd have to rethink this, but I'm fully confident that we're not going to see groundwater within two feet of, of grade, which I'm, I, I wouldn't be proceeding in this manner if I wasn't confident of the fact that uh, we'd see groundwater less than two feet from grade.
Okay, uh, ju- just to point out that, that the site, uh, while none of the test pits were done directly where the, the the rain gardens are going to be, there were about 10 of them done in the immediate surrounding area. So that's why, that's why we have that confidence that, that we're going to get the same thing at those locations. It's because we, it was done in about 10 other locations in the surrounding area.
And that's all I had for questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Uh, George, do you have?
I did have a question. Steve, over on the right where it says six spaces on the 22-foot drive aisle. Uh, that's, is that whole area a snowdrop zone?
Yes, it could be. We could drop snow there, yep. And actually, I like this, I like, kind of like this area too for snowdrop, for the fact that basically as it melts, it's just going to bleed across the gravel across the site. And then we have a, you know, it hits this area where it'll run around and then we have a water quality swell or a diver- a water quality swell that, so you got a tremendous amount of treatment before even makes it to the, to the rain garden. The, the slope on the, the natural slope on the site is from right to left towards uh, Island Boulevard.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, George. Uh, Leslie, do you have any questions?
Um, I just would like to have my memory refreshed on the uh, purpose of the shed. It's remaining in where it is.
Yes, the shed is remaining. I believe it, um, Vincent, you can elaborate on the, the purpose and, and use of that shed.
Yeah, uh, on top of being used for just general storage, um, uh, we plan on connecting water to that particular location uh, um, to be utilized for the, the hand sink as well as on the other side of it uh, closer to Old Point Road. We, we do plan on kind of having a temporary area there if, if, if the restaurant is a little bit busier just for extra uh, food and drink service kind of running out of that area. Uh, nothing permanent, but um, in, in, in general, it's largely just for, for, for storage and, and, you know, having a location to connect the water to.
Just connect the water? There won't be any electricity involved in it?
Uh, there will be a uh, electricity run to that area. We're going to kind of create a loop that runs around uh, just in case something is needed um, to plug in, in that area as well. So there will be a, you know, a, a a four-prong plug, you know, one of those uh, plugs in that area. That, that'll all feed back to the main uh, restaurant. We just kind of want to make sure there's, there's electricity available everywhere on the site, whether it's for lighting or, or for whatever use might be needed.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Leslie. Uh, Woody, sir, do you have any questions?
The only thing I, one question I have is um, by the exit, the rain garden by the exit. We, we heard about the end of Old Point Road and the line of sight up the Boulevard, but there, you don't think the rain garden uh, by the exit will impede my site?
Oh, no, we're, we're actually well back. So, you know, a car, a car pulling up here. So the car would be uh, the edge of, the edge of travelway, let's see, is, is about here. So you, you'd have easy, easily, easily could see, see down, down that way, down to the left and also much easier to the right pulling out.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, buddy. Uh, Mary, do you have any questions?
Um, just a quick one. Um, you may not have the answer to this, but I'm curious as to whether that area has experienced any water table uh, rises. Has, has water table risen at all?
Um, I don't believe, I don't believe so. There's no reason why it would. Basically, the water, for the most part, the water table on the island is, is more tidally based. Granted, you do have a little bit of a freshwater pound on top of it. Um, but you know, you know, with the whole, you know, they talk about tidal rise and such. I, as far as any impact back in this area, uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't see any, any um, reason for groundwater to rise substantially here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So uh, Martha, I have a couple of questions for you. We're in a flood plain with this, right?
Uh, yes, it's in, it's not velocity zone, but it's the AE zone.
Great. And did you, on the application, what is, what are the hours of operation that are proposed?
Um, Vince had sent an email uh, last week uh, saying that he would actually like to have the flexibility of being allowed to be open from nine AM to midnight.
Nine AM to midnight, okay. Um, great. So uh, um, Steve, this will be to you. So the, the propane tanks, the 500 gallon and the 120, now that they're identified, uh, those would be secured to the ground or are you going to elevate those and then secure the post?
Uh, they'd be, I, I think that most likely what we do is they'd be uh, secured to the ground at this point, you know, with the fence around them.
Okay, so they'd be chained to the ground.
They'd be out, yeah, yeah.
That's what we traditionally see all, all over the island.
Right, right. Yeah, because that, that'll come through conservation. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So uh, uh, Steve, I'm just gonna have you just advance the uh, image up just a little bit, just so we can get a, a look at the, at the uh, great, great. So um, I, I'm, I'm real comfortable with the 13 compact spaces with somebody backing out because a small car is going to have a greater turn radius. Won't have to go too far towards Plum Island uh, Boulevard to back out and to go in that one-way direction. My one concern is the, the first parking lot on, of the 14 spaces, which would be, you know, could be a pickup truck or something else, by trying to back up out of that first space. Uh, would it make sense? Or do you think that that would be a concern? Would it make sense to eliminate that first space and just go with the second space as the first space, just so that there's plenty of backup space in case of a larger vehicle does pull in there? Because I, I could see a lot of, you know, visitation at the site during the summertime.
Um, you know, I guess, you know, it's actually, this car here is, this is actually unfortunately, I probably should have put a pickup truck in. This is probably about a 17-foot car. This is, you know, a 17-foot long car. It's a large two-door sedan. Um, I, I'm not, I don't, if, if the board is concerned, I don't know, Vincent, you know, that's, that basically we lose three restaurant seats ever, for every.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess my, my only comment on that would be, I mean, going down the list of the businesses on the island, you got the Plum Island Grill that backs out directly into the road. You've got our store with the ice cream store where you back out direct, that has some spots that back out directly onto Plum Island Boulevard. Uh, the Beach coma has the same, the Plum Island Provision has the same, Mad Martha's doesn't really even have parking, so you can't really count them. So pretty much every business on the island has direct onto Plum Island Boulevard. So I guess I would, I would ask if possible to, for a little bit of leeway on that spot, given that, yes, that it, it, if it was a very large truck. Uh, the only thing that maybe we could do is maybe turn it into a compact spot, if that would be okay with you. That way we at least limit the ability for a, a really large vehicle, but at least still get to maintain it.
Yeah, I would think so. Just because, you know, there's, you know, pre-existing conditions, doesn't mean that we won't continue that thought process, especially.
Of course. No, I, I, I understand. So if, if turning it into a compact spot could be a good uh, uh, solution that, that means that, you know, no jacked up, you know, pickup truck gets pulled into there, then, then, then I would definitely be okay with that.
Yeah. So the other thing, the other thing, Peter, I could probably do, I, I got a pretty spacious turn here. If you see this spot, uh, a couple of feet back here.
Hold down?
I could probably cheat these spots, you know, probably two feet. I could get away with moving these, this whole bay a little bit right, a couple of feet.
Yeah.
Still maintain my turning, give this a little more space, go to compact, alleviate that. Any concern there?
Okay, just try to keep everything, because I think it's going to be important, the more that we can just control everything onsite, I think the better it's going to be.
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
夏天, okay. So um, we kind of touched on this, but I think I need a little bit more understanding. Um, and this might be to you, Vince. Um, uh, with terms to hours of operation, you know, uh, nine to 12 is a pretty by swi- swipe of time and I don't have an appreciation of understanding that first off, or, or weekend activity or what the wintertime plan is. So if you could kind of lay out what your vision of your business plan is, spring, summer, uh, fall, winter, just so the board can appreciate that. And um, if you think, you know, you want to have more flexibility to have, you know, breakfast in, on the weekends versus during the week, uh, I'm just trying to take into account uh, people that live on the island, uh, normal traffic in the morning, uh, all the considerations of people coming in and out in the summertime. Um, just all the different variables, because I, I don't have an appreciation of how you want to do your business and what your volume would be like.
Of course. No, I, I appreciate you wanting to know that. Uh, you know, I guess I'm, I'm asking for that flexibility because a lot of, of what's going to dictate the hours is going to be what the demand is from the people on the island. And so, you know, the, the idea of having, let's start with the morning side, the ability of having potentially brunch, you know, in the summer, on the weekends is something that we want to leave the idea open. Uh, we're, we're not necessarily thinking that'll immediately happen, but, but we don't want to, we don't want to lose that opportunity if it's something that, that there is demand for um, on, on, you know, but that is definitely some, not something we're looking to do on an annual basis. It would be more of a, you know, weekends between, you know, labor and uh, Memorial and Labor Day or something like that, where we may consider doing a Saturday and Sunday brunch, which would necessitate, you know, slightly earlier hours. Um, on, on the late side, I mean, this is, this is one of those items that I'm, I'm particularly as the owner of, of all the properties that's around it, very sensitive to. Um, but at the same time, I don't want to necessarily preclude um, if, if somebody were to, you know, let's just say rent out the, the restaurant for an event or something, to be able to maybe have slightly longer hours. Um, so it's, it's really kind of just asking for some flexibility for us to figure out, since this, this is something that, that's kind of new to the island and, and um, there's a lot of unknowns as far as, as, as where the demand will be and when the demand will be is, is kind of hoping that the board will give us some flexibility to kind of determine what's most appropriate and and hopefully trust that, that as the owner of the properties that surround it, that, that we're really gonna make sure that it is something that is uh, appropriate
Right.
uh, for the area.
So I understand the, 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 the desire for flexibility and uh, the unknowns. Um, because the hours of operation are really going to, from my perspective, uh, influence with traffic concerns might arise, quite honestly. And if I don't have a good appreciation of what the hour is going to be like, what the volume is going to be like, I don't, I don't feel comfortable about the understanding the, the, the traffic needs at the site.
Well, the, I, I could say that at least in the, in the summertime, the, 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 the normal hours will be lunch into, into the evening and, and and a little bit later than that, but and, and it won't be early in, in the day unless it's for a potential brunch that our, our normal hours that we're, we're contemplating is going to be something that goes from lunch to through dinner. Um, it, it's more the flexibility if we decide to add that, you know, special Sunday brunch or, or something of that nature. And then on the, and, and once we get to the, to the side seasons, you know, spring, fall, and especially into winter, that is obviously going to get ratcheted back, probably not really offering in the, if we do stay open in the winter, which, which eventually I think we'd like to get to that if, if there is the demand. That will likely be more of a, of a uh, dinner uh, dinner time except on weekends type of, of uh, of hours.
Okay. Hey, Steve, could you stop screen sharing for a couple of seconds, just so I can visualize everyone as we're having our conversation now? Thanks.
Here we go.
That's the one thing about Zoom, you're, you're continuously going between trying to make sure that we can see everything. And I just want to pop back that screen. So I guess where I was going with my concerns, uh, Vince is I'm uh, I don't know if I'm, if I'm comfortable with traffic concerns and needs, a potential expansion of traffic concerns without having a, a full under- understanding of what the hours of operation are going to be. Now, if you told me it was going to be, you know, you know, 10 to 10 to 10, you know, and on the weekends, we were going to open early and this is what our plan was for the summertime. In the fall, we're going to do this, in the winter, we're going to do this. Um, but I'm almost, I'm, I'm thinking that we might need to have some traffic review, peer review of this, just to make sure that the needs of Plum Island aren't disturbed, uh, the, the residents of Plum Island. And so this will be suc- successful for you and not create a problem down the road, so that we're just, we have everything lined up now so that we don't have a problem uh, that could uh, impede your business operation. Does that make sense?
No, that, that definitely makes sense. I know we did do a, a traffic analysis. Uh, Steve can speak to that a little bit more. That would have addressed peak hour uh, traffic uh, for a restaurant.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we did a, we did a trip, uh, a trip generation manual based on 164 seats. Uh, calculations based on um, you know, weekday and we, and, and weekends. Um, now, the, it didn't, it, we didn't have the restaurant open during the morning, but to be honest, the morning, I, we wouldn't expect the morning to be a peak, you know, i- you know, if it was a brunch, you really wouldn't start until nine or so. Um, and that a brunch operation wouldn't, wouldn't definitely not be generating peak uh, peak conditions there.
And that was shared, I believe, with DPW who, who didn't express any issues, correct, Steve?
No, yeah, deep, yeah, there was no, there was really no, up until this point, there was really no comment or no concerns regarding the trip gen. You know, it's a moderate, it's not a, you know, super heavy generator. It's um, it, it's a moderate traffic generator. Um, as far as the size, you know, size and scope of, of typical, typical projects that we deal with. Um, you know, I
So Steve, Steve, my concern is, you know, there's a restaurant across the street, there's ice cream stand up the street, there's a bar down the street. Uh, and then it's going to be, hopefully, a very successful business on the corner. Uh, I just want to make sure that it all fits and flows. I, now I just want to, I kind of poll board members to see if there's any concern with what I've kind of mentioned. Uh, Larry, what do you think?
Yeah, no, I mean, obviously, traffic is something that, that we need to have a handle on.
Okay. Um, George? Oh, George, you're muted, buddy. Yep, you're muted. Let me see if I can unmute you. Can I unmute George?
I don't think we have the ability to do that.
George, can you unmute yourself? Uh, bottom left. I'll tell you what, I'll come back to you and I'm going to try, Leslie, any, any, any concerns, Leslie, what I've just kind of discussed?
Um, I don't, I think it would be a different kind of traffic flow as far as, uh, early morning. I mean, and the also the difference between the inability to serve alcoholic beverages in the morning. Um, if it was strict breakfast place, it would be an in and out. But I think, um, a traffic review would probably be a, a good idea to find out what the traffic is really like at that time of day, especially, um, you know, has it, it changes dramatically through the seasons.
Okay, all right, thanks, thanks, Leslie.
Yeah, take into consideration, there's a tremendous amount of bicycle traffic down there as well, not just, uh, cars. So that, you know, is in addition to cars coming this way and that way, there's a, a lot of bicycles and, uh, they seem to be in more peril than anybody that's in a car as you're driving through Plum Island.
All right, thanks, Leslie. Uh, Woody, any thoughts, sir, on, on, on the traffic?
Um, I could see how if it was a popular destination for Sunday brunch, it could, um, bother some people on the island trying to get off the island.
Okay.
On a, on a week, a week basis, but, um, a traffic study would help all of us see better what, what's going on there and what time of day.
Okay, all right, thanks, sir. Uh, Mary?
Traffic study is a good idea. Um, however, this is an extraordinarily busy place, particularly in the summer, um, the traffic is coming from all angles, all places, across that bridge, on Plum Island. I am very concerned because the restaurant industry is taking hits everywhere, um, that our area, um, is thriving from a business standpoint. Um, so I am reluctant to put on too many constraints. I do think that the traffic review would be fine, and I think it's important, so everybody has a handle on it, particularly his concerns. Um, but I really want to make sure these, um, gentlemen and women involved in this project have a chance to succeed. This is a busy area and a good restaurant, um, in that corner, which is an I saw right now, uh, is a plus. So all I'm saying is let's weigh it carefully with the understanding that we want these guys to succeed. We need the success and the restaurant industry needs to succeed and the good people who are in it, hopefully are thoughtful and kind and generous to the community. They'll make it.
I appreciate those comments very much, Mary. Thank you.
Yeah, Pete, I'm just trying to ascertain the scope of traffic, you know, we provided, you know, the.
Steve, hold on one sec.
I'm sorry, okay, I'll let you, I'm sorry, sorry for interrupting.
George, George, your thoughts, sir?
I'm back on, uh, my only thought is that the traffic flow within the restaurant coming in up from one road and leaving to another at least helps alleviate the problem. They're not trying to get on in and out of the same egress and exit. So I think that does help. There's a lot of traffic here in the summer and there's not a lot you can do about it, not much at all.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Right.
Um, Martha?
Yes.
Um, to have somebody from a traffic standpoint, take a look at this, what, what do you think time wise that would involve?
I guess it kind of depends on the scope of the work. I mean, a couple of thoughts are occurring to me, and one would be, um, you know, I heard some comments about just getting a handle on what the traffic counts are right now. We could, I could talk with Tony Kamornick at MVPC to see if they've done any recent traffic counts in that area. Um, they have looked at it for, for parking issues, but I don't know if they did traffic count, so that might be something that's readily available. If we were to get a peer review traffic study, I, I would imagine that would be a couple of weeks.
Okay. Uh, understand that. And Steve, I can understand the frustration on your face and I can see it. Uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, we're, we're, we're addressing the needs and the safety issues that might, uh, might expand. And as Mary said, we want this to succeed.
Yeah, absolutely.
You want everything lined up, uh, because I don't want to, you know, be in a, in a situation where we should have or could have, uh, when we shall now. Um, so I think, um, Martha, I'd like you to try to, uh, have a conversation with Steve and Vince. Try to identify maybe the three components that might, we might want to look at from a traffic study perspective. Uh, let's see, we can get, if we can get numbers from MVPC, see what that looks like. Uh, and if there, you know, a, a couple, uh, items that we need to consider that we haven't thought of, uh, maybe that might be beneficial, beneficial if we have a very limited scope, uh, review that could look at those couple, two or three items and I could, you know, weigh in offline on that or with a conversation. Um, uh, that would be helpful. I think that might be a good direction to take. And I think that might alleviate any concerns that we might be having from residents on the island as well.
Okay.
All right, um, so what I'd like to do at this point in time is I'd like to open up, uh, for public comments and questions. Uh, Martha, did you have any, uh, emails or letters that you've received, uh, since our last public session?
Uh, let's see, I've received, um, one public comment from Steve Manchin, which was received this morning. Um, and as noted previously, we do have a second peer review letter from, from Joe, and those are the only two new communications.
Okay, and those are posted and the board members have an opportunity to review those. Um, so what I'd like to do at this point in time is I'd like to, uh, invite the public, uh, to, uh, produce, uh, if they have any new comments or new information, uh, that would be helpful to the board. So we've heard a lot of beautiful comments, uh, in the past, but I'm looking for new information or new comments and new concerns. Uh, if there are any, if you would please, uh, indicate by raising your hand with a raising hand function, uh, or the star, um, star nine, star nine on your phone, if you're calling by phone, uh, so that we can address those comments or concerns, or the applicant can address those. Um, Martha, do you have anything in the queue?
I am not seeing, oh, Steve Manchin has raised his hand.
Okay, Steve, name and address, my, my friend.
He's muted.
You're muted. Uh, try again. There you go.
Think we're there.
Yep.
Um, well, first of all.
Manchin, address. Yes, yes.
The proposal to be open it.
Steve, name and address.
I'm sorry, say again.
Name and address, please, Steve, just for the record.
I'm sorry, Steve Manchin, twenty-one fourteenth Street on Plum Island. Certainly, the concept of staying open till midnight is a brand new. And my thoughts aren't necessarily well thought out, but I know in the neighborhood that I live, because again, this is a residential, uh, community. Uh, you know, quiet hours tend to come in at ten o'clock at night, and the traffic tends to die down at ten o'clock at night because we're settling down for the night. Uh, at first blush, I certainly wouldn't support something being open till midnight, given the traffic that would also ensue. Um, and perhaps, you know, alcohol consumption late in the night. But I'd like, I can generate a, uh, written comment later, since I'm just hearing this for the evening. I believe, um, it might have been Leslie or someone brought up how the traffic considerations need to talk about bicycles too, because there is a huge bicycle traffic down there. So if you embark on a study, I suggest you try and figure out how to incorporate the inevitable slowdown of car movement and resident movement because of the bicycles and the cars going to the restaurant. Um, I also have to note that I've spent a lot of time at Plum Island Center parking lot because of my other, uh, work for the town. And I have seen, on weekends admittedly, in the summertime, how the traffic can back up from, uh, the intersection of Plum Island Boulevard to, um, Northern Boulevard, a solid mass of cars trying to make a turn and dealing with pedestrian traffic. And sometimes that traffic backup goes beyond the crossroads of the four roads, crossroads down by Old Point Road. So I have a, you know, a lot of concerns based upon what I've seen with the traffic flow down there. And again, I'll try and put this down in writing as soon as possible. Um, something, if I can move to a slightly different topic, uh, I was glad to see that there's an outdoor sink being proposed now, which is something new. Um, and I know there's been at least some thought given to whether you should have an outdoor bathroom or not. Let's say mobile and up on wheels, which might be a lot more attractive than porta potties. And I'm hoping more concern is given to that. But where I really, uh, find myself scratching my head a little bit is what I call, um, harmonization, harmonization. That is, we've been before the zoning board of appeals, the conservation commission, the planning board. The planning board is seeing some adjustments to plans, and I'm wondering what plans were approved by which board at what time. At some point, they need to come together. Um, I think, you know, the concept behind the propane tank for the fire pit's a good one. But if you're going to have to bring propane to the fire pit, well, you're going to be doing some digging, and that may be something that the CONCON has an issue with, but certainly hasn't reviewed previously. Hence, I think some thought needs to be given to, uh, seeing if all these plans line up with one another. I fully recognize that there can always be some de minimis changes to plans. But at some point, we may see ourselves getting beyond the de minimis look, and hence the need to, uh, do what I call harmonizing the meeting. Um, something I'm not clear upon is that I can appreciate that alcohol with a permit could be served at the indoor restaurant. But if it's going to be served outside, I might not be in support of that. I don't know whether that's under the purview of the planning board, but if it is, I certainly would not encourage outdoor alcohol consumption till midnight, perhaps, or in the other time. So that's a question I have, but, um, it's the traffic that has me, uh, really thinking a lot since, uh, in the hours of operation. Let me also add one other comment about the hours of operation, that is, Sunday brunch can be a very popular thing. I live very close to Mad Martha, so I see people coming down on Sunday mornings and Saturday mornings for breakfast. And I can imagine, quite to the success of the restaurant, the people will want to be coming down Saturday and Sunday morning, uh, contributing to congestion at that early hour. And I think that could be a concern for the planning board and certainly residents that are trying to get on and off the island. So thank you for the chance to comment and I'll, uh, look forward to writing something up for you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Appreciate your comments and participation. Um, Martha, did you see anyone else with a raised hand or a star nine coming in from the phone?
Um, I don't, I saw someone with a raised hand previously, um, but he lowered it.
Yeah.
And I'm just scanning to see if anybody's physically waving. I don't see anything.
Okay, um, with that, I just wanted to see if there's any other comments from board members after that, uh, brief discussion. Uh, Larry?
Um, no.
Thank you, sir. George?
Your comments?
Thank you. Uh, Leslie?
No.
Uh, Woody?
No.
Uh, Mary?
No.
Okay, um.
Peter, one quick thing?
Yes, Steve.
So how about, um, I guess one thing, it seems like the brunch kind of threw everybody off and then midnight threw, it's kind of threw, it's kind of threw a monkey wrench. Because, you know, originally there didn't to be much, you know, there wasn't much brought up about at the original meeting, not too much about traffic. If we'd said, okay, if we started off with the hours at eleven, say eleven AM to eleven PM, and then for any expansions of hours, they'd have to come back before the board with the traffic, you know, a more in-depth traffic study. Would that, would, would that sway maybe the, the thought of, of additional traffic study work?
I think, I, I appreciate where you're going, Steve, and I, and, uh, you know, again, uh, you know, having an appreciation of the business plan and knowing what you want to do and when you want to do it, how you want to do it, is what helps us, and that's still very fluid. Um, so I think, you know, it's a step in the right direction to say, hey, we're going to, you know, trip down our hours. But however, I, I don't want to limit you. You know, if, if the weekend's nine AM makes sense to have a breakfast, you know, Saturday and Sunday, and you can make it work, that's great, and that would be great revenue. So I, I wouldn't want to limit that. Uh, I just want to make sure that the traffic issues are addressed uh, and pedestrian, pedestrian safety is, is maintained. Uh, because I think you, Vince, I think you're going to have a real successful home run here. I just want to make sure that the community is aware of what's going to, what the impact is going to be in, so we can just have that in consideration. So I think the board is leaning towards, they want a little bit more insight from a traffic perspective. We're going to try to hone it down, try to be very focused, so it won't be a long drawn out thing. Hopefully, you can, this will be continued. Um, and I, I think you probably have some stuff going on with some other boards that, you know, are probably, uh, uh, aligned. And so, um, we, we tried to facilitate this process as quickly as possible. I just want to make sure that we digest all the material appropriately and we have in hand. So what I'm going to suggest is we do that, uh, kind of breakout discussion that, that I had mentioned with Martha, um, and get the, get that going and get it going in a rapid manner. I have it, you know, very focused so that we can get the information back to the board. Uh, and Vince, if you, and Steve, if you have, you know, information with regards to more of a business plan that's structured, so the board could say, okay, we understand what's going to happen. You know, in the summertime, we understand what's going to happen on the weekend, weekends, we have a feel for the fall, uh, perspective, just because it is a very popular area. And it's a, it's a natural, uh, resource that a lot of people from across the country come to visit, especially, uh, the refuge. So, um, it's, you know, it's a great concept, great location, let's just, you know, make sure that the home run is a home run and it doesn't get, you know, into a double, you know, a double that should be, uh, you know, a home run. Um, so I'd like to, uh, suggest that we do that, and, uh, I'd like to have, I'd like to continue us, Martha, where, where, where we end up with that?
Right, let me see if I can share my screen more successfully tonight than I did last time.
We're going to have success.
Martha, you think there's any way we could kind of hone in on the traffic over the next two weeks?
Uh, yeah, no, let's have a discussion, uh, sooner rather than later.
Just to try and keep this thing, we're really under the gun to train, train, push this along.
Now, where, where are you in terms of conservation, uh, process? I know that you've gotten, there's some comments from, uh, DEP.
Other work, that's news to me. I, last time I checked, DEP, there were no comments.
Yeah, no, actually, um, Bill gave me something just at the end of today. Um, and they've got, uh, they, uh, so if you, if you'd like, I'll read it to you. Um, they said that concrete asphalt gabion wall and pavers do not meet coastal doing performance standards.
Concrete gabion wall, we don't have any concrete gabion walls.
No, concrete asphalt gabion wall and pavers do not meet coastal doing performance standards. So you might want to follow up with Bill.
Okay.
On that.
All right, so let's try to hone on our date for our follow-up. Uh, where are we here? So we're into March.
So we are into, into March, August seventeenth, we've got, uh, quite a full night. We haven't discussed March twenty-fourth yet, but I think we're going to have to look at that for a zoning amendment public hearing.
Okay.
And then our next regular meeting after that would be April seventh.
Um, do we, if we're going to be doing a zoning amendment meeting on the twenty-fourth, do you want to keep that singular?
You know, that should be relatively short, so it's really up to the board whether you want to add some additional business to that or not.
Uh, or, or then we're looking at, at a month out?
Um, if, if possible, we'd love the twenty-fourth, that would be.
Sure, Steve, I got you.
How about tomorrow? You want to make a special meeting tomorrow?
Doesn't, doesn't meet the poster requirements of the open meeting law.
Sorry, Larry, would you be okay with the twenty-fourth if we did a bylaw and then we tack this on the end, end of it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, George?
Yes.
Okay, that would work with you. Uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, Woody?
Sounds good.
Okay, and Mary?
Yep, sooner the quicker the better for these guys, that's my feeling.
Steve, you're in luck. The board is.
Beautiful.
The board is in the right place. So let's do that, Martha, we'll, we'll do our zoning, uh, first.
Okay, we have to set a time, so, um, if, uh, I guess options would be to start at, you know, six thirty for zoning or six forty-five. I honestly don't think it's going to be very long. And then, um, have this at seven or start the meeting at seven and have this at seven fifteen.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we do earlier, just so that we don't drag on to the night? So why don't we start at six forty-five for our zoning? And why don't we, we'll give ourselves some cushion, just so we can have discussion, uh, and do you want to do seven fifteen?
Seven fifteen, sure.
Okay, so I'd accept the motion to continue this for the twenty-fourth of March, seven fifteen?
So I'm going to continue the public hearing until March.
Second.
It's seven fifteen.
Thank you, Larry, I think.
Second.
Thank you, okay, uh, on the motion and discussion, George, discussion?
Yeah, no, no discussion.
Larry, discussion?
No discussion.
Leslie, discussion?
No discussion.
Woody, discussion? Mary? Okay, Mary, discussion?
No, sir.
On the motion, Larry?
Yes.
Okay, uh, George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Okay, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, and the church chairs are favorable. Great, thanks very much, everybody. We appreciate your, your diligence with this project and. Okay, and the church chairs are there. Great, thanks very much, everybody. We appreciate your diligence with this project and continued understanding.
Thank you all.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to continue with our public hearings. This is a concurrent public hearing, 15 Coleman Road map, R02 lots 12 and 13. Owner, applicant, Zenko LLC, Tom Z, manager. It's an OSRD special permit application and it's an OSRD definitive subdivision plan application. Tom Z.
Actually, Leslie needs to read the public hearing notice.
My, my, my bad, my bad, my bad. Go ahead, Leslie.
Okay. First, if I, which or anybody's name, I apologize in advance. Residents, excuse me, Town of Newbury, Office of the Planning Board, 12 Kent Way, Byfield. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, OSRD Special Permit. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021. At 7:15, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually via Zoom to consider an application submitted to, submitted by Zen Deco LLC. Tom Zahorkoro, Manager for Approval of Open Space Residential Development, OSRD. Special Permit for a seven lot, open space residential development at 15 Coleman Road, Byfield. Assessors map, R02 lots 12 and 13. Property owner, Zen Deco LLC. The proposed subdivision is shown on drawings entitled, Open Space Residential Development, 15 Coleman Road, Newbury, Massachusetts, O1922. Dated May 4, 2020. Revised August 5, 2020, and January 25, 2021. Prepared by Civil Design Group LLC and described in accompanying application materials. Copies of the application on file with the town clerk and in the planning office, 12 Kent Way, Suite 101, Byfield, Mass. And may be reviewed on the planning board section of the town's website. For more information or to obtain digital or hard copy of the application, contact the planning office by phone at 978-465-0862, extension 312. Or by email at planningboard@townofnewbury.org. All persons interested or wishing to hear, wishing to be heard relative to the proposed OSRD are invited to participate in the hearing remotely and designated time from their computer tablet or smartphone at http colon, double, double front slash US02web zoom.us. Front slash J, front slash 83271413056. Or by telephone by calling 1-929-205-6099. U S and using the meeting ID number 83271413056. Or may watch the meeting live or on local access cable channel or at www.tnct.org. Peter Pagos, Chair of Newbury Planning Board, published by the Newbury Report Daily News, February 15th.
Leslie, thank you very much. You can see why I wanted to jump right over that, I guess, huh?
Got more?
Yep, she's got a second one to do.
Oh, my goodness. Go at it.
All right. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, Open Space Definitive Subdivision Plan. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021. At 7:15 p.m., the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually via Zoom to consider an application submitted by Zen Deco LLC, Tom Saharuka, Saharuko, Manager for Approval of Open Space Definitive Subdivision Plan for a seven lot, open space residential subdivision at 15 Coleman Road, Byfield, Mass. Assessors map, R02 lots 12 and 13. Property owner, Zen Deco LLC. The proposed subdivision is shown on drawings entitled, Site Plan Set for Fieldstone Lane, an Open Space Residential Development Definitive Plan. 15 Coleman Road, Newbury, Mass, 01922. Dated January 8, 2021, revised January 25, 2021. Prepared by Civil Design Group LLC and described in accompanying application materials. Copies of the application are on file with the town clerk and in the planning section of the town website. For more information or obtain a digital or hard copy of the application, contact the planning office by phone at 978-465-0862, extension 312. Or by email at planningboard@townofnewbury.org. All persons interested or wishing to be heard remote relative to the proposed subdivision are invited to participate in the hearing remotely at the designated time from their computer tablet or smartphone at https colon, double, front slash US02web, web zoom.us. Front slash J, front slash 83271413056. Or by telephone by calling 1-929-205-6099. U S and using meeting ID 83271413056. Or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel nine or at www.tnct.org. Peter Pagos, Chair of Newbury Planning Board, published by the Newbury Report Daily News, February 15th and February 22nd, 2021.
Leslie?
Thank you, Leslie. You're not allowed to read one more of those.
Oh.
You're, you're done for the night.
She's not, she's not done for the night. She's got one more.
Case, hopefully I have all the eyes in place and the Ts crossed. Martha, do you have all the cards from partners, notifications and tier sheets from the daily news?
Yes, we have received those.
Okay, great. Okay, now, Tom, I think the floor is yours.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thanks, Peter, and thank you, Leslie. I feel like I should give you my, my text to read for me too, but I'm going to do it myself. My name is Tom Zerico, 15 S D Street in Amesbury. I'm the principal of Zenko LLC. We also have engineer Phil Henry from Civil Design Group, who's at his Zoom station and will do his best to screen share appropriate elements of the plans as I speak. Martha, can you and Phil arrange to have him share his screen?
Yes.
Okay, while you're doing that, I'll just get into this. I, I'd like to take about six minutes, I think, to introduce to the public and to refamiliarize the board and the staff with this property and the proposed project. I'll focus on the general elements that would be of interest to the broader public audience while leaving technical elements for discussion and questions as needed by the board, staff and the town's consulting engineer. My comments are going to be concentrated in four areas, the site, the project goals, the conventional design, and the OSRD design. The site is 15 Coleman Road. It's a 32 acre site, which includes a 1787 traditional home of approximately 3,000 square feet and adjacent 40 by 36 foot barn, a small shed workshop, and a more recent single bay garage building. The surrounding grounds consist of informally manicured grassed areas, farm paths leading into more established mature forested areas out back. A bisecting wetland, which is traversed by an existing farm road crossing, which provides easy access to the rear of the site. There's gently rolling terrain crisscrossed by connecting baths and stone walls and vegetated with a variety of mature evergreen and deciduous trees. There's a beautiful understory dominated by low growing blueberries and offering serene interior views of the property. The existing street scene is dominated by the complex of buildings, along with stone walls notably, including the witch stone, which is now located in the stone wall near the eastern end of the street frontage at Coleman. A few mature and also compromised trees, some of which have lost large limbs and one which came down in the course of this winter. And then especially picturesque stone wall on the west boundary, which frames, frames views of the adjacent open farm fields. The site's bordered by undeveloped property from the governor's academy, open farm fields and a few residences. As far as the goals of the project, consistent with my personal history of development, how to preserve and enhance the appropriate elements of the existing complex of buildings to protect the wetland resource and forested upland areas beyond and to sensitively design and develop a small residential neighborhood of high quality, reasonably sized homes. I'd like to emphasize, to stay focused on consideration of not only the changes that were proposed in here on the property, but more importantly, and thanks to the OSRD bylaws that Newbury has. What's being preserved or untouched with the majority of the property is, is really more significant than what, than what isn't being touched, than what is being developed, rather. I mean, the concept of greater, greater good being accomplished by a more compact development versus conventional development. You know, disturbing a much larger area of the site. I just want everybody to keep that in mind when we talk about some of the details. As part of the OSRD special permit process, we presented a conventional subdivision plan with a basic number of five lots. Phil, if you can get that up there, that'd be great. This is the yield plan. This plan complies with zoning and subdivision rules and regulations with consideration of wetland resource areas, soil conditions as tested and observed. The conventional plan disturbs a large portion of the site, requires an enhanced wetland crossing as well as alteration for housing units in the pristine upland beyond the wetland. That plan provides limited satisfaction of the project goals. We then devised the seven lot OSRD special permit plan, which is really the subject of these applications. The plan evolved through the combined inputs of me as the owner, the engineer, surveyor, landscape architect, soils experts, as well as municipal feedback. The seven lot density is proposed pursuant to the density bonus provisions of the OSRD bylaw, which allows the additional two lot bonus due to the large amount of proposed preserved open space. And those calculations are detailed in a table in the plan set. One of the seven lots contains and preserves the existing home and barn where they currently exist. And the other six lots are all confined to the upland area closest to Coleman Road. Access is provided by a 400 foot long cul-de-sac with access to the open space provided from the cul-de-sac. The proposed 27.2 acres of open space is 86% of the entire parcel, of which 65% is upland and includes all of the wetland area and extensive contiguous upland beyond. The entire pristine area, as I think most people have been out there, is really ideal for walking and hiking. This area butts the undeveloped land of the governance academy as well as a few residential neighbors. The OSRD plan requests a few waivers from conventional design standards. Those are all listed on plan set. But satisfies all critical elements for public safety and public service access. The plan, the, the plan was sensitively crafted to maintain a nearly balanced site regarding earth movement. And due to the compact area of lots and homes, proposes slope granite curb and a very simple conventional drainage plan, which results in less impactful grading and site alteration than what we would typically find in this kind of a layout in what we normally refer to as a low impact drainage design. Once again, this contributes to the goal of maximizing the amount of unaltered open space. And our DA was submitted to CONCON. It's being superseded later this week by an NOI application. Septic system, common septic system has been designed and will be submitted to health as soon as we feel that the, the, the lotting plan is firm. We're proposing fee ownership for the homes and lots and HOA for the common septic and acceptance of the way as public. The main house and barn will remain in place. The workshop is proposed to be either moved or recreated in a prominent location on Lot 7 with a strong presence to Coleman Road, maintaining the current multi-business, multi-building aesthetic. The site will be serviced by municipal water in Coleman, underground cabling and a common septic system. Natural gas is available in Coleman Road, but that's obviously subject to the provisioning policies of that utility company. Again, our engineer, Phil Henry from Civil Design Group is available to support us here tonight on technical questions. You know, I'd like to ask if we can follow the board and public input with the opportunity to respond to questions and comments that might come up. And also to discuss preliminary feedback from the town's review consultant, which we just recently received with the board in order to facilitate our timely responses and appropriate responses to some of those things. I don't think we need to discuss them all, but some of them we'd like to have some direction with the board so we can properly respond to those. And back to you, Peter.
Okay, thanks. So you did mention peer, peer review comments that I think you probably received on Monday?
What is today? Today is Wednesday. I think, I think we got them maybe, maybe Monday in the last couple of days, yeah?
So we probably, have you had an opportunity to look at any of those by chance?
Oh, yes, we have, yeah. And we, Phil and I have discussed those and we certainly would like to. Many of them are routine, some are sort of, you know, minor items. Some of them I think is a, some of them are interpretive in terms of what, what's required and what's practical to, to, to put in the plans, I think.
Okay.
And others are, you know, are, are worth, I think, a public discussion to make sure we have some direction on it.
Okay, appreciate. Great. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, at this time, I just want to run down to board members to see if they have any questions on what's been presented thus far. Larry, do you have any questions, sir?
No, I mean, I'm anxious to see, you know, the response to the peer review letter, but, but right now, no, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Larry. George, any questions, sir?
No questions, Peter.
Thank you, George. Leslie, any questions at this time?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody, any questions at this time, sir?
I just need a clarification. This is not a proposed public right away, right? Remain a private cul-de-sac?
It's being proposed, Woody, if I can respond to that as a public way.
Okay.
And I know that's a discussion topic.
Okay, I have no other questions at this time.
Thank you, Woody. Mary, any thoughts?
No, not yet.
So we'll probably stop screen sharing if that's possible. Beautiful. And so what I'd like to do is kind of open this up for any questions that might come from the public at this point in time. So Martha, do you see any hands that are up with questions?
I see somebody named Mark, no last name, with his hand up.
Okay, Mark, we'd like you to address the board and if you, first name, last name and address, please.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm still new to this computer stuff and I'm trying to get my video on, but my name is Mark Cutter. I live at 23 Coleman Road, a few houses up. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mark. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. First of all, thank you very much. And I first want to make a note that I appreciate the Woodbury family. I've been up here 20 something plus years and the Woodbury family, when the father passed away, they really took consideration how they sell this property and I think they really did take this into consideration. So kudos to them. I would still make that note. Thank you very much for that, for the Woodbury family. I just got some questions and first of all, to the, the developers, Zenko, and I'm sorry if I can't pronounce it right. I think they did a very good job laying it out and I appreciate that. Thank you very much for that. I just have a couple of questions living up here. I live at the very end of the water line, which is 23 Coleman Road. And the water line for Byfield Water ends at 25. I think it's 25, the next house up from me. And Green Tree Lane, you know, seemed that whenever they flush the hydrants or anytime there's water pressure problems, we seem to suffer from it. We get a lot of debris and low pressure. So I just don't know what adding six houses to the, I think it's six houses. Add this water pressure to the town by field. So I just, hopefully they can address that. The second thing I have is that it's going to be turned in. I understand by looking at the blueprints, I'm not an engineer, so I apologize for ignorant here. But the blueprints show there can be some public access to the public lands, which is, I think it's great. I love that. But it's going to be turned to a public road down into the cul-de-sac by looking at the blueprints. And I just, I'm concerned about traffic up here. No one comes up here, probably never will. But if there's traffic, where they're going to build a park or the town or Newbury puts. Up here, no one comes up here, probably never will, but if there's traffic, where they're going to build a park or the town or Newbury puts, Newbury puts some restrictions on parking up there in that little cul-de-sac, or we're going to see an influx of traffic parking on Coleman Road, which is very dangerous as it is. That's well known right now because of traffic speeds from Newbury to Raleigh cutting across. And I'm sorry, I'm looking at my notes. I apologize. And the last thing is like, we lose power up here a lot with electricity, so I'm not sure it's his concern, but it's probably more of a more wider variety of electricity, but adding six more houses to the grid, we lose power a lot here. A lot of us up here have portable generators. Because installed generators, because we lose power a lot up here with some incident. And I'm just not sure what the the generators, I mean, I should say that generates, but the the power outage and six more houses to the grid will create any problem. Maybe it won't, but I just, I just, I got them three questions that may not have the answer tonight, but I'm more concerned with the water more than anything in the traffic. Was there a traffic study done? Because the entrance to the driveway and I looked at it very closely, comes across from Long Brook. It's a very dangerous intersection because they have a, they have a mirror there, whatever you call it. People also additional traffic may be an issue for the town of Newbury. So that's just my concerns. And again, I think they did a great job laying out and I appreciate the, you know, their concerns and looking out for it. And thank you very much for looking out for us.
Mark, thanks very much for your comments and for participating. The board does appreciate that. Thank you. Martha, who do we have next?
Bill Manthorn is next.
Okay, Bill, name and address, please. Thanks, sir.
Sure, thank you. Bill Manthorn, 79 Elm Street in Byfield, Mass. Just a couple of questions. Again, to kind of reiterate what was said before, you know, I appreciate the open space and what the builders trying to accomplish here. So it sounds like a good plan. With regard to the open land, is, are you planning on actually making like, you know, trails, like a rail trail system back there? Or is it going to be left, you know, natural with just, you know, whatever is, you know, made from walking through the woods? I know there's some paths that, you know, a market used in the past, kind of going around looking at the property. Is that kind of going to be left like that? First question. The second question is, again, I'm not an engineer, so it's maybe a dumb question, but from, it looks like there's some water remediation that's being done from the houses that are being built. I know there's a lot of wetlands and I'm kind of downhill a little bit diagonally from this. Just curious if there's any, you know, in looking at this, is there was any concern of adding to the wetlands back there or causing any potential issues?
Thank you, Bill. I don't know, Tom, if you want to address those two questions, or if you want to just keep those for talking points?
No, I'll, if you don't mind, I'll take them now and do the best I can with them. If we have to follow up more, we will. I appreciate the comments from both of the butters. With regard, I'll start with Bill's comments, just because they're they're simpler to address, I guess, quickly. The trail status, if you've ever been through there, Bill, there's wonderful trails. They're actually drivable trails through most of that back property. Those certainly can be, you know, can be cleared a little bit better, maybe here and there where there's been a branch or a tree that's come down over over time, but this, there's quite an extensive network that runs the perimeter of the property and also crisscrosses the property at multiple points. You know, you can actually drive out there with a with a four wheel drive vehicle and not have too much worry about it, to tell you the truth. So that that gives you a little bit of a sense of the condition of those trails. And if there's others that that it makes sense to enhance it with, then we certainly can. There's a, there's a delicate balance when you have trails of having enough so that people can can find their way around and appreciate what's there, but we don't want to have it be a grid, you know, a grid of just trails either.
Exactly. No, that's honestly not to interrupt, but that's kind of what my question was. I was hoping you're going to say you're going to leave it kind of more natural.
Okay, okay. And with regard to drainage, I mean, that's a good question. It's usually a technical question and Phil can answer this, but I'm going to answer it and someone will tell me if I'm wrong. Basically, when we do new development like this, the engineering, the drainage analysis that we do has to essentially prove that 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 we don't increase the rate or volume of runoff to any adjacent site. And that's not just our engineering firm who has to do that and produce that, that work product, but the town hires their outside consulting engineer to review and confirm that that in fact is the case. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Now, Mark, you know, a couple of questions that you had in terms of the water line, you know, we did have discussion early on, just to make sure that the water department felt like there was sufficient, you know, volume and pressure out here and they did indicate that 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 it was sufficient for for this, this much change. In terms of the stirring up, you know, at the end of the line, I've actually lived at the end of the line myself. I know what you're talking about. If the end of the line isn't looped, then it doesn't self-clean. I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that other than, you know, the town being vigilant about flushing that line to make sure most of the debris and settlement in there isn't there. But it certainly shouldn't be exacerbated by anything that we do. Similarly, in terms of losing the power, I don't think adding the houses is, has any impact on that. The capacity is there. I know there's a lot of trees. In fact, we had portions of one large tree on this site come down and another one of the large trees right at the edge of the right of way at the street broke in half during one of the early storms. You know, a lot of these trees are in the, you know, have have reaches into the into the lines. It's not an unusual situation in rural environments, but but adding adding a few homes shouldn't have any effect on that. They they'll also experience the same problem that you will when there's a power outage, but they shouldn't exacerbate that problem. Parking for access to the to the open space. This is a, this is a, I think, one of the big topics of discussion here. And before we even get to that one, let me get back to traffic for a second. The visibility on on the outside of the curve where our our access is, is dramatically better, as I'm sure you know, than it is on the other side. The other side is very constrained because of the curve. Actually, the the distances from our side of the curve where cars are entering into our side is substantially better and complies with 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 not just the posted speed limit, but but what what would be a, you know, a higher speed limit that people are more normally traveling. So visibility on our side is actually quite good. The the access to the open space, I think, why don't we leave that and have that? Because that's going to be a bigger discussion. Why don't we continue that at the end and see what other comments there are, if you don't mind, Peter?
Okay, sure. We can do that.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Mark, and thanks, Bill. Who do we have next, Martha?
Next, we have Dina Sullivan.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Dina Sullivan, 21 Coleman Road here in Byfield. We are also a butters. My questions seem to go along with the other two that have already been asked. But I guess my concern with our property in particular is water issues. We've had issues since we've owned this property since 95 with our driveway flooding. I'm concerned, a couple of things. Where the, I tried reading the water report and it is way beyond my capabilities. So I give you guys credit for being able to read all that. Anyway, I, I want to make sure that the impact of building those homes is not going to create any water issues, number one, and also if it would have any effect on the water table. The reason I ask is we are on a well and our well water seems to be decreasing. Part of that could be global warming and you know, a lowering of the water table, I'm not sure. But that is a concern. I also am curious to hear the discussion on the open space behind the proposed property. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dina. Appreciate your participation tonight and being here.
Peter, this is Phil Henry. I can address the stormwater question if you'd like.
Sure, Phil. Do you want to give it a, give it a quick hit?
Okay. I believe she said it was, Dina, you're located at 21 Coleman, you said?
That is correct.
Okay. Which you appear to be up gradient of the property. So the property is actually flowing in a in a westerly direction, opposite of your home.
Okay.
So the, the the, the, the stormwater flow today and tomorrow's quote unquote will will not, will not affect your your property because we're down gradient of you. And then it further goes down gradient in in the westerly direction. So does that answer your question?
It probably does. That's kind of what my husband assumed, but like I said, I cannot read these plans. I have no clue.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, I guess, yeah, to put it simply, you're at a higher elevation from us. So it's it's more likely that your runoff comes on to this property than vice versa.
Yeah, it's not practically what we have experienced, but I understand your point. What about the water table level? Do you see any impact there?
Yeah, no, we don't. This, this is this is such a small development with respect to the, the, the greater region, particularly the groundwater of this property with respect to the wetlands as well. So I don't anticipate any negative effects relative to to groundwater at all.
Okay, thanks very much, Tom. Phil, appreciate it very much. And Martha, who do we have next?
We have somebody whose initials are R D A N B. I'm not sure what the name is.
So you'll need to unmute. You'll need to give us your first name, last name, and address. So we'll start with that. Thank you.
Danby Whitmore, 61 Glenn Street. So I back up to this property and I'm, I'm very excited that this is going through with such a nice, good open space plan. But just to follow up on what a couple of other people said. So the water, what you're going to use town water for water source or well, I, I I think I missed what you said on that. And then I just want to make sure motorized vehicles would be banned in the open space part.
If I can answer that, Peter, is that okay? Okay, the where, yes, we are using town water, so there won't be additional wells. And although we had not discussed it yet about the banning motorized vehicles, I think it's a very practical idea. I assume that's something that would be probably generally preferred. And I think that's certainly something that we, that, you know, we're okay with that condition and hopefully that's something that the town would probably prefer.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Appreciate your participation, participation tonight and being here. Martha, any other hands at this point in time?
I don't see any raised hands. I'm going to just scan and see if anybody's waving. Can't access. Yes, I see that. Martin and also.
Martin Gray.
Martin Krugman, 19 Coleman Road in Byfield. Thank you for this opportunity to address the board. I am relatively new as a resident of this area and what attracted myself and my family to this community was the rural agricultural and residential nature of this community. And although I find a lot of merit in the proposal to preserve the wetlands that exist behind our respective properties, I'm concerned about the development from a number of different vantage points. So let me ask you first, is this the proper time for me to present my concerns to this board?
Yeah, it is. It's proper time to articulate your feelings or ask questions, Martin. Thank you.
Okay. I think the, from a most general point of view, the the code, the building code of Newbury Port, I'm sorry, Newbury argues that there's, there are both primary and secondary purposes for the OSRD coding. And the primary purposes seem to be fairly well met by the developer. But the secondary purposes, which include number one, to preserve and enhance community character, and two, to protect the value of real property. I do not believe that this development is going to achieve that. I think, in fact, I have significant concerns that putting six additional houses in very close proximity to one another on a what seems to be a four and a half acre plot of land is essentially creating an urban environment in essentially a very rural and agricultural area. Now, there are a lot of specific concerns that I have secondary to the idea that they are attempting to pack too many houses into too few square footages. For one thing, they need to request a waiver on a number of issues regarding the right of way and they plan to install a cul-de-sac that does not meet the standard requirements. In the fire plan, they show images of Newbury fire trucks essentially fitting in very nicely into that cul-de-sac. But with the left wheel touching the left hand side and the right wheel touching the right hand side, there is barely enough room to get these vehicles into this cul-de-sac. It is an a undersized cul-de-sac. Secondly, the cul-de-sac is going to connect with Coleman Road at Long Brook Road, where it is a notoriously dangerous intersection, where there's a long history of accidents. And while the vantage point from the, from the property that's proposing to be developed is perhaps superior to that from Long Book Road, which is complete total blindness. I do not believe that it is a safe entry point to have so many vehicles that would be associated with so many houses. I, my, by my rough calculations, I would imagine that the the seven four family housers are going to bring in 25 to 35 residents. And that there will be probably 14 motor vehicles in this very compact four and a half acre property. So my concern is that in an effort to save wetlands, we are providing for an overdevelopment of a very small property. Now, the the other point that I would make is that the noise pollution that is likely to occur from having such a high concentration of buildings in a small area, which is completely in violation with the prevailing general agricultural and residential code for having 40,000 square feet per property. Seems to me worth it if we're going to get a trade off by the preservation of property of wetlands, of, of rural property that would otherwise not be preserved. But in this case, and I'm not an architect, but it seems to me that the 86% of the property that is going to be turned over into public lands is basically undeveloped land. And therefore, the developers proposing to trade off this undeveloped land to overdevelop a very small parcel of developable land. I think that when we first heard that the property was sold and that the that the builder was going to put in three houses, we were fine with it. When I discovered two weeks ago that the three houses had become seven houses, I felt that this was really way, way too much for this neighborhood. In effect, this is going to double the density of housing in this area. They are going to put up as many new houses as there are existing houses adjacent to this property. And that will fundamentally change the character of the area without any real benefit to the community because the property, area that's being preserved would basically be undeveloped in any case. So although I appreciate the willingness and the interest of the developer to maximize profit for this development, I am concerned about not only the quality of life for myself, my family, my neighbors. I am concerned about not only uh, the quality of life for myself, my family, my neighbors. I'm also concerned about the negative impact that this may have on the property value of the abutting properties. All right, when I look out the window, I'm gonna see, you know, seven houses right in front of my yard. Not trees and birds and frogs. Well, that's about what I want to say. So let me stop there.
Great. Martin, we appreciate your comments, your concern and your participation in tonight's meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Martha, who do we have next?
Uh, next we have Kevin Blanchett.
Okay, Kevin, uh, the floor is yours. You can unmute yourself on name and address, please. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have three points to make, three Ps, if you will. One is a, is a pub.
For a sec, yeah, I'll just need your your address.
My, my fault. I'm sorry. My name is Kevin Blanchett. I live number one Green Tree Lane here in Byfield, and I'm just outside the circle of friends. Of three hundred feet. I live across the street from most of the abutters. However, I live at the corner of Green Tree Lane and Coleman Road. Which will bring me to one of my points. The first point I want to make, one of the Ps is really a public interest point, and I'm happy to see. That the developers are going to maintain the Witch's Stone. Which is a historic site in Byfield. And if they will maintain it as it is, I would like to see perhaps in goodwill, some type of a a marker. Designating its significance. So that's my, my kudo to the developers. The second point is is really a public safety point. I live on the corner of Green Tree Lane and Coleman Road. Half of my property is in the town of Raleigh. And half, at halfway point uh, of my property turns into Glenn Street. Coleman Road Glenn Street has become a speedway. It's a death trap. It's a pass through between from from basically ninety-five down to Elm Street. School Street over to Route One. It's it's a, it's a cut through. And traffic enforcement is non-existent on our side. It's sporadic on the Raleigh side. And I have been passed, I don't know if any, Mr. Chairman, if any of your board members have have driven Coleman Road. Or Glenn Street, but I have been passed on Coleman Road. Many times with people in far excess of the speed limit, which is twenty miles per hour. At the exit of Coleman Road on Glenn Street, onto Route One, there have been many fatalities. As Mr. Krugman said earlier, at the intersection of Long Brook. And and Coleman Road, there have been many accidents. The entrance to this development is probably at the worst possible point. It's the height, at the height of a hill, curved hill coming upward. Maybe the the sightline is perhaps better getting out. But by my numbers, if you have seven four bedroom houses. You're going to have two plus, and I'm not a planning member, and I'm not very good at the new math. But I assume that with four bedrooms, you're going to have two plus automobiles. They're gonna be exiting and entering that particular lane, as it were, onto probably the most treacherous mark point. Of Coleman Road. So number one. I would ask that a traffic study be commissioned. Not only to to determine the efficacy of the entrance or the 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 cut point of the of of the new, of the new street. But to determine the traffic patterns that might be impacted by the new development. Traffic study. Number two, reiterating what my colleague and neighbor and friend, Mr. Cutter, had mentioned. We live at the end of the line of the Byfield Water District. This uh, this development would be serviced, um, not by municipal. It's by a district. It's well water that's controlled by a district. Okay, it doesn't come from Newbury Port. It's not piped in from the river. It comes from wells that are owned and operated by the Byfield Water District. There are four of us at the end of the line when it comes to Byfield Water. Mr. Cutter and two other neighbors and myself. My house seems to be at the end of the line. The fire hydrant that grace, adjacent to my home is the last of the line. It's the butt plug, if you will, of the Byfield Water District. The pressure here is atrocious, absolutely atrocious, because we're at the high mark of the elevation. Of 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 the, the, well, of of, but the well, the the pressure, the wells are based on pressure. And so because we're so high in Byfield, the pressure is so low. My concern is that adding seven four bedroom homes into the Byfield Water District. Might certainly affect the pressure from those above. So second ask. I would ask that there be some type of a, um, a rapport developed with the Byfield Water District. Trying to determine what the impact of this new development will have on the pressure for those who have been there. For twenty plus years at the end of the line and have suffered from poor water trash, uh, water pressure. So three points, public interest is the witching stone, public safety is the traffic issue, which is severe. And the third is really kind of a a personal interest, the water pressure for those of us who are at the end of the line. I very much thank you for your attention, and I hope that these could be addressed at some point.
Kevin, thank you very much for your presentation, your comments. And yes, I love the witching, the witch's stone as well. It's it's very significant, especially to our town, our culture. Thank you and thank you for being here tonight, helping the board out with this process.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Martha, is there anyone else else with comments or questions at this time? I don't see any hands up.
No, I'm not seeing any either.
Hit the door.
Pamela Myers.
Yep, Pamela Myers, Kenny. I live at five Long Book, Long Brook Road. Um, and I would just like to add my little two cents worth of the the traffic because. I've lived here for thirty-two years and trying to get out of Long Brook. It's a look right, look left, look right, look right, left, go. And luckily I have not been in an accident, but I've come very close. And I was grateful that. I think it's been just what maybe at most three years ago that we, there was a mirror that finally appeared on the other side of. Long Coleman, so that we could actually look down Coleman Road to see if there's any approaching vehicles. Of course, that's required that we periodically have to go over and adjust it because of high winds and everything, and it gets out of alignment quite often. But it is a very dangerous corner, and I too am very concerned with. People coming out of Coleman or out of the Fieldstone and onto Coleman. Not really paying much attention to what's happening over on Long Brook. Of somebody trying to get out of Long Brook and they just, they just look right and left and go and and don't even. Perhaps look, and that's a lot of vehicles trying to come out of one. Up until now, what has been really one driveway. So. You know, just wanted to put my point in there on that. I'm.
Wonderful. Pamela, thank you very much for participating tonight and helping the board out with. Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Not coming on me.
Martha, do you see?
Ed Armstrong.
Okay. Uh, Ben, would you name an address, please? Thanks, sir. But you'll have to unmute yourself. Hold on for a sec. Yep. You got it.
Sorry, uh, Ben Armstrong, thirty High Road in Newbury. Um, we actually, uh, my family was able to, um, go along with Tom. Uh, and his team and the Conservation Commission at a uh, walk through of the the site and, um. Generally, we had a favorable reaction to, um, to the 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 plan. Um, and to Tom personally, I I think it was, it was a good thing. The one thing that that uh, we have that at the moment, I think we want to share, uh, my family's well. Uh, we live at, uh, I grew up and and my parents are still at one Coleman Road. Their well is, um, in the field below the the property, quite a, quite a distance from. But down slope from where the leaching field for the septic will be. I expect that, um, it should be, um, because it, I'm sure it's well designed. That it shouldn't be an issue, but I think we just wanted to raise the question, um, and make sure that 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 their interests are are preserved.
Wonderful, Ben. Appreciate the comments and the concerns with regards to your parents. Well, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Excuse me, but I'm I'm here and I'd like to provide some comments, if that's possible.
Sure, sure thing. Uh, we we try to use the raise hand function, so.
I I have been. I've not been called on, so.
Sorry, we haven't seen it raised.
Well, understood, but I'm telling you that I have.
Great, great, great. Okay, we got it. We got it. So please name and address and please go.
Is Mary Ann Sheen Spatchipoli, two two three High Road, of course, in Newbury. And I'm here because of the Gadsden Development, but I also like to add some. Perspective on what I've been hearing so far. Number one. Getting online here, and I'm somebody who works all day long in Zoom. This has been beyond difficult. I've been dropped off multiple times. I've been raising my hand. Obviously, you guys haven't seen it. And it's not that I'm not capable around this kind of stuff, because I work for multinational organization. And I like, it's worked other places. It's not working here. Number one. Number two. I I want to understand how these decisions are made. And I, uh, listening to the person before me talk about. Like the well and the new developments that impact as well. Well, I'm I'm kind of experiencing that as well. So I'd like to understand that, and I'd like to understand. The it, the how decisions are made around cutting trees down, making decisions around that. And the impact on folks that are. Abutting the developments that are occurring. So, uh, you know, I'll leave it at that, but I do have some more specific. Comments around Gadsden's development and, uh, but but I'll leave it at that to start out with.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mary Ann. I appreciate your comments. I'm sorry there was difficulty. Connecting with Zoom. We try our best on our end to to facilitate. I don't have an explanation. For why there was difficulty with you this evening. Um, but uh, thank you very much and. We we do appreciate the comments and we do have guidelines with regards to tree cutting and those, those are some of the things. I'll look at when an applicant does present an application. So thank you very much. Thank, uh, and your comments and your participation tonight.
Okay. Okay. Hello.
I I don't know if I have specific answers to your questions.
How do people get to cut down trees? And what is the process around cutting down trees? That's the first thing.
Okay, I'm just gonna direct you to Martha for a sec.
Yeah, I mean, might I suggest, I know that, uh, Mary Ann is actually known to the Gadsden Lane project, and it might be. That might be a more appropriate time to bring up some of these students, because I know that. She has had questions about some of the work that's already been done on that property.
Okay.
So I would suggest that these get deferred to that public hearing.
To that, to that, to that project as opposed to this project. Okay, very good. That makes, that makes good sense. Um, I think we will do that. Thank, thank you. If that's okay with you, Mary Ann.
Sure.
Okay, great, great. Um, are there any other questions or comments, public comments with regards to this applicant in this public hearing? Okay, I don't see anything. Martha, did you see anything?
I am not. Derek Estella.
Okay.
Raised his hand.
Great. Derek, uh, name and address, please.
Uh, sure, Derek Estella at four Green Tree Lane and I guess, I don't know if they call that. You know, zero Green Tree Lane or two green, the little parcel on the corner as well. I just wanted to first say I appreciate all the time and effort that's going into this. I certainly appreciate the detail and thought that's going into the planning. I was fortunate to have a little bit of an exchange with Martha. Uh, this whole process is kind of a new one, so I did submit a last minute letter. We were kind of up against the clock here. I having just got noticed last week. Um, I guess a lot of the things that I outlined will probably be part of further aspects of the discussion and certainly. I can already sense in some of the the comments that are being made, so. I don't necessarily need to reiterate those things, because some of them are just. My lack of awareness about like the development process and kind of all the things that go into that, but I do think it's important. I want to just. Kind of reiterate a neighborhood concern, certainly the the way in which Marty pointed out, although. My vantage point is a little bit different. Um, kind of the center of our backyard, our property is our backyard space and. Out the back corner, we would be, uh, we look right over to that corner. Uh, my vantage point is significantly different, obviously, than some of the. The people who are right on that property line. Uh, but I certainly can understand the concern from going. To the, to the original proposed amount of lots to the seven. Uh, I certainly. Think that that does change the perspective in the neighborhood where, you know, all of the lots are. You know, half an acre plus with trees and, you know, and and old growth things kind of between the, between the various structures and dwellings. But the two other things that I just thought were significant focuses, like everybody's talked about the the traffic and the potential need for a traffic study. I certainly can appreciate, um, the flow of traffic off the proposed road is is certainly a superior view. But I think with it being slightly offset, um, the entryway from for that road being slightly offset from Long Brook. Really, I almost enhances kind of the the concern for the traffic there. And I don't want to just focus, or I hope that the planning board doesn't just focus on. The immediate way of travel on the primary road, but it really does, uh, it's it's immediately adjacent to three already established driveways. So I just hope that in that process, folks consider the um, the amount or the number of access points. Right there at one point in time. Now granted, it's not a concern all the time. Uh, but it certainly, I suspect it would be a concern at at some of the points. I think that's important and I. I also wanted to indicate that, you know, I appreciate, uh, the the OSRD and the and the preservation of, um, the open space in the back and access to that. The plans kind of indicate, you know, the idea of it, you know, coming under the supervision of the town or perhaps a, um. You know, a third, a third party kind of entity, and I think, I think that I I I'm hoping that there can be some clarification about what specifically that means. Because I know the plan does not call for any parking. I I suspect there really wouldn't be any available parking in such a small. Or kind of undersized cul-de-sac road. Um, but you know, if it, if it, if it comes under the guidance of the town, I suspect as the, as the developer is probably hoping. You know, it really is just neighborhood kind of traffic kind of thing. But if it's something that falls under something larger, say like the trustees. Those organizations have paid membership and they advertise. You know, the the places that their members can go and birdwatch and do all of those things. Well, in a neighborhood like ours. You know, although it might not seem like a lot, but if you get five to eight cars on a given day, like that's pretty substantial. And the way, I I mean, as most roads are in Newbury, but in particular in Academy Park. None of the roads have the features that we, anybody would would need to facilitate foot traffic, including. Sidewalks, you know, how would somebody cross Coleman, that type of thing. And I I just feel like that's something that. Although it seems like it might not be a major consideration, it really does seem like something that would impact the neighborhood. But I just would ask that that be considered and and it quite frankly, it probably is. Um, but I just think those are important aspects.
Derek, uh, thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate your comments and your participation tonight, and it helps the board in this process. Thank you, sir.
All right, we have Linda Senical.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I know that there will be a traffic study conducted and just wanted to.
Linda, I'm just gonna interrupt for a sec. Just your your address, please. Thanks so much.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Twenty-five Coleman Road in Byfield.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, when the traffic study is done, my my concern. When the traffic study is done, my, my concern is that Governor's Academy, I don't think is up and running totally. That brings quite a bit of traffic onto Coleman Road. Plus, a lot of people at this point are working from home, which they may continue to work from home. But as things do open up, it is going to increase the traffic. And if you do a study right now, it may not be representative of some time in the future. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We, we appreciate that comment, and we also appreciate your participation tonight. Thanks. Great. Do we have any other public comments at this point in time for this application?
I am not seeing any more raised hands. I'm just looking here.
All right, Martha, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to read any names of anybody who's written comments to you today that would be posted on our website.
Actually, so far, Mr. Estella sent an email at 7:06 PM, so we had not received that in time to distribute to. I just, I just checked emails when he mentioned that. So we haven't received any other public comment regarding this project. We have received, as noted, the peer review letter from our peer review consultant, Joe Sirwodka, and departmental comments from Chief Janvren and James Saret, the DPW Director.
I want to now kind of go around to the board members to see if they have any questions or comments, since we've had this, the discussion just start. So I'm going to start first Larry with you, sir.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've received a lot of good information tonight, and, and we've had a lot of very pertinent questions and, you know, raising very legitimate issues. But in a sense, I, I have a sense that we're getting ahead of ourselves just a little bit. To me, the starting place in any OSRD application has to be the yield plan. And for those members of the public who might not be familiar with it, what the yield plan is, is, is a plan that the developer puts forward, which they which they believe complies with all of the requirements of law for a definitive subdivision plan. And based on, we have to be satisfied that we have a good yield plan, because it's the yield plan that determines how many lots, you know, the OSRD will support. And in this particular case, we've got a number of comments from our peer reviewer. And just to make another point, too, if, if the developer in any OSRD can put forward a yield plan that complies with all the requirements of the law, then the, this board has very little authority to turn it down. The OSRD is an alternate form of, of subdivision. So these proceedings are less about if something can be built and more about what can be built on the property. But I, I think in order to, to arrive at that judgment, we really need to answer some of the questions that the peer reviewer has brought up regarding the yield plan. And I'm just looking at the February 28th letter. One, one comment has to do with the scale of the drawing. I'm sure that can be easily corrected. But he also questions the adequacy of perk testing. And in, in a couple of, it makes a couple of comments about that. And also, the, and I'm quoting here, "The board may want the engineer to address whether a common driveway would be required to access slots three and four." I'm not sure why a common driveway might be required, but if it is, that requires a special permit, so it takes us out of the as-of-right definitive subdivision plan. To put it another way, the yield plan maybe isn't valid as a yield plan. So I, I think we need to, as a preliminary matter, really need to look at the yield plan and get some of these questions answered.
Larry, thank you, and thank you for the explanation to the public, the importance of a yield plan to get to the OSRD. That's an important part of this discussion, and thank you for connecting those dots. Appreciate that. George, do you have any comments at this point in time?
No, other than I appreciate all the input from everybody who is on tonight. It's been very helpful, I think, to the board, and for thanks to us taking this into account in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Appreciate. Leslie, do you have any comments at this point in time?
No, I do travel the road somewhat frequently, and I do appreciate what all the others have mentioned, because there were so many things that, you know, just being a traveler doesn't exactly bring you into what actually goes on, on the road on a day-to-day basis. So I appreciate all the information that was given this evening.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody, next board member, do you have any thoughts, comments, or questions at this time, sir?
As far as the water concerns and water pressure concerns, I, I have, I do have one question. Is the existing house on this property on well water, or is it on the, is it tied into the system? Byfield water system?
There is one here.
Woody, it's tied into the system.
It is, okay. That's, that's all I have for questions now.
Okay, thanks so much, Woody. Bless you, Leslie. Mary, do you have any questions or comments or concerns at this time?
Yeah, so when I go with George, so thank you very much. Everybody's participating. It's helpful to me. To be determined for the future, I'd like to know more about the perk tests and also the size. Seven homes, but more importantly, does land perk? And if so, how does it perk? That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mary. Appreciate those comments, and we'll direct those to the app. Some homework to be done. Before I go to the next step, which would be continuing.
Peter?
Yes.
Yeah, could I have an opportunity to respond to some of the other comments, or?
I, you could, and just give me one second, because I have one more public comment. I want to see if, if Martin something new that he wants to add to his previous comment. Martin, do you have something new that you want to add to the previous?
I have a question based on the first board member who just spoke regarding the determination of the yield plan and its impact on the board's decision-making about implementing the yield plan as proposed in accordance with the alternative development plan. And the question that I have is, is the, in order to implement the yield plan, if there are significant waivers that require alteration of a normal implementation of the development, does that follow that that would automatically be granted? Or does that need to be considered as well? In other words, the yield plan may say seven properties, but the implementation of seven properties may not fit on the lot that is being proposed. And is that an automatic approval based on what the board member had suggested?
I'll try to answer that. And Larry, I'm going to have, have you back me up in case I say anything wrong here. The yield plan is kind of like the, the stepping stone to see if, if the applicant can do an OSRD. And the OSRD usually has more development and more density than would be allowed in a conventional yield plan. The yield plan has to stand on its own. If there are any waivers or exceptions, or, you know, like Larry mentioned, the possibility of a common driveway within the yield plan by itself is not as of right. And if it's not as of right, then it wouldn't fly as a yield plan. Therefore, it would, there'd be a, a different hurt. There is, the hurdle can't be made to get to the OSRD. And Larry, did I say that correctly?
I agree 100%.
Okay, great. Okay, beautiful.
Thank you.
Question. Okay, great. Okay, so, Tom, I'll, 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 I'll be honest, you can answer the questions now. The, or, or we can hold them to our next public hearing for, for discussion. I just don't want to get too, too, too long in the process. So I'll let you make the determination as to whether you want to answer questions now, or if you want to, you know, sharpen the pencil and, and bring them next time. It's, it's up to you, sir.
Yeah, I would really like to address some of them now, but I won't take too long. I'm pretty efficient at this.
Okay.
A couple of things. I mean, Martin, to your, to your questions or comments, you know, the, the 86% of this, of this, or the 86% of this land that is intended as open space, has a very, has a small percentage of wetlands. We're not preserving wetlands. We're preserving mostly beautiful, pristine uplands for the most part. I'm not sure where three houses were described, and, and, and then the appearance of it exploding to seven came from, because three houses is not something that I ever conceived of, but maybe somebody else had done that in the past. And, and, and for the record, you know, and, and, and I mean this respectfully, and I mean it very sincerely, is if profit maximization was, was my intent, my financial statement would be very different, and I would not have proposed an open space residential development. I'm perfectly happy to, to pursue this as a conventional plan. I think it's the irresponsible thing to do in the big picture. But you know, that's, that's for somebody else to decide. Okay, enough on that one. The, the water pressure, we, we did communicate with the department, with the water district. We were under the impression, for whatever reason, we can reconfirm that, that, that volume and pressure was sufficient. We can reconfirm that and find out if there was something that that, that's either different or misunderstood there. I do understand the traffic. Again, as I said, we were very deliberate about looking at the traffic and, or the site distances in both directions. There's, there's no question, it's a different scenario across the street than it is at this side of the street. You know, I, I'm not sure that we can do anything about the, you know, the way traffic is there already. Maybe the solution is making it one-way. I doubt if that's, you know, you know, a desirable solution for people, but maybe that minimizes some of the cutting through. I know we've done that in other places that in any event. Ben, with regard to the well and septic interplay, I mean, that's clearly something that the Board of Health would be looking at with the septic design to make sure that there's no potential issues of, of, of intermingling of those facilities. Let me see, what else do we have here? The open space access. You know, within, within a quarter of a mile, I don't know, Phil, if you can pull up that, that schematic, but from Chrysanthrus or not, but within a quarter of a mile is approximately 50 residences, within a quarter of a mile of this property. Then a half a mile is about 140. You know, when I look at open spaces like this, and, and I, I don't know who made the comment, but somebody made a very, you know, very wise comment about some of the other stewards of, of, of open properties, advertising them, encouraging them, you know, creating more of a destination than, than what I would expect to have happen. I, I look at this as almost a neighborhood benefit. Not a place to be, you know, encouraging vehicular traffic and, and, and people parking from, from who knows where. That's not, that's not the intent in my mind. So again, I think there's a lot of people, if, if development was done like this on a regular basis, that the parks and, and open spaces like this in every part of town, and nobody would have to drive to any of them. It's what we've done for years. 70% of all the land we've developed is open space like this. And it's not something that we necessarily think to, to encourage vehicular traffic at. It's something to encourage for the benefit, for the most part of the community, but for the most part of the closer community. And I think that's most of it, Peter.
Peter, may, may I say something about the yield plan? I think it's important to, to just address and, and, and talk about the nexus between the yield plan and the OSRD.
Sure.
And I'll, I'll make it quick. So, so to, and this is Phil Henry again with Civil Design Group, the engineers on the property. And, and to Larry's point, he's absolutely correct. The yield plan sets the baseline for the open space residential development, which allows for a 50% bonus density up to, I guess, seven units or two and a half units, obviously, which is why it's seven. The yield plan, if, if you look at the requirements in the open space, under the open space for the yield plan, we feel that the plan that we attached or included meets the, the, the planned contents and the design requirements of the yield plan. So, and I want to, I just want to drill down on this just for a little bit. So the yield plan shows five lots for which one subdivision road or is, 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 is proposed, which is, which is, which complies with the subdivision regulations, and Joe acknowledges that. He has comments about the, about the scale of the plan, but the yield plan in the open space OSRD, to my knowledge, doesn't require a minimum scale. However, as Larry noted, it's, it's very simple just to, you know, to zoom in. The, the test pits for the, for the three lots on the, on the, on the Coleman roadside of the wetlands was witnessed by, by Joe. The, the, the two, the, the two lots on the opposite side of the wetland were not completed this past summer, because there are historical records with the Health Department. However, we've tried to reach out and, and, and obtain those records for adequate, you know, to, to show adequate soil information. However, we have not received that information. So we did not want to go back there, track, and track a, an equipment over the wetlands and into the trails so as to just request that. However, it, it should also be noted that unless I'm misunderstanding the regulations, perk tests are not required to prove a yield plan. They, they shall be provided if available. So I think that should be noted. So in, so in summary, the cul-de-sac, the, the, the yield plan, which shows five lots, depicts a, a code compliant road. And each lot includes the requisite frontage and area, so. And, and so I think a lot of Joe's comments has to deal with the, with the perk tests on lot three and four, which we've requested from the Health Department, and, and, and the scale to some degree. He also comments about a perk test on lot one requiring a larger septic area, which, which that is fine. But I, I think we can confidently say, and, and it's our job to prove it to you, and we think we have, that, that five lots can be constructed on this property, which, which would then bring us to the, what we think is the responsible design, and that is provide seven lots, or I should say all development on the roadside of, of the wetlands. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. You know, I just wanted to, I just wanted to drill down on that. And also, it's, it's a shame we didn't go through Joe's comments, because a lot of his comments, or a number of his comments point to having a conversation with the board as to what we, what you would like to see. So I'm, I'm not sure how much advancement we can make between now and the next meeting. We'll do our best. But I think a lot of the responses are dependent on, 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 on the conversation that, that we should have at some point. Okay. Thank you, Phil. And I do appreciate that you just received Joe's comments rather recently. So you haven't had the opportunity to, to write a written response, so thank you. Okay, I don't see any more questions from the public, so I'd like to continue this meeting. Martha, can we take a peek at our schedule, please?
Yes. Were you able to see that?
Yes, we are. So we have March 24th, where we have our, we're going to do our zoning and that one public hearing, so that will occupy that evening. So then we're back to our traditional first and third meetings of the month, which would be April 7th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just going to pop that in, so it's there. Okay?
I'm doing this one here.
So just so the public knows, the planning board meets the first and third Wednesdays of the month. We typically start our meetings at six, at seven o'clock, and we usually try to finish within a two to, two and a half hour interval. We started this meeting earlier to try to accommodate applicants and to try to keep things moving. And we do have a supplemental meeting that we're doing on the 24th to
And to try to, like, uh, keep things moving. And we do have a supplemental meeting that we're doing on the twenty fourth to address some, uh, issues that we have with the bylaw. And, uh, continuing. So we're gonna look at, uh, April seventh if we could. Um, and, um. I would appreciate a motion to continue this meeting, uh, to the seventh at the seven fifteen.
So we'll move to continue the public hearing to, um, April seventh at seven fifteen PM.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, this emotion is our second, George?
Second.
Second, very good. Uh, on the motion, any discussion, Larry?
No discussion.
Any discussion, George? Any discussion, uh, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
No.
Any discussion, Mary?
No.
Okay, on the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Okay, George? Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Woody?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary?
Yes.
Great, the chair is in favor as well. So we'll continue this on the seventh. Thanks very much, Tom and, and, and team and all the public that participated. In our meeting.
Thank you, folks.
Hey, uh, next on our, uh, uh, our agenda is public hearing for definitive subdivision application. Two seventeen, uh, two twenty-one High Road map, R twenty-seven lots fifty-one, fifty-four and fifty-six. Applicant, uh, Gladstone Lane LLC, Adam True, manager, owner, uh, D, MDM nominee, Trust Dale. Uh, I'll be, uh, bachelor in, uh, Carl Brown trustees, lots fifty-one and fifty-three. And Carl Brown and Margaret Brown Estate of Margaret Brown, lots fifty-four and fifty-six. And after I say that, it's gonna go over to you, Leslie. Thanks very much.
You're welcome. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note. That on Wednesday, March third, twenty twenty-one, at seven fifteen, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually via Zoom. To consider an application submitted by Gadsden Lane LLC, Adam True, manager for approval. Of a definitive subdivision plan for a six lot subdivision at two seventeen and two twenty-one High Road, Newbury, Mass. Assessors map, R twenty-seven, lots fifty-one, fifty-three, fifty-four and fifty-six. Property owners, MDM nominee, Trust Dale Bachelor and Carl Brown Trustees, lots fifty-one and fifty-three. And Carl and Margaret B. Brown, lots fifty-four and fifty-six. The proposed subdivision is shown on drawings and. Entitled definitive subdivision, Newbury, Mass. At two seventeen and two twenty-one High Road dated February third. Twenty twenty-one, prepared by the Moore and Cameron Group, Inc., and described. Excuse me, and described in accompanying application materials. Copies of the application are on file with the town, town clerk in the planning office. Twelve Catway, Suite one oh one, Byfield, Mass., and may be viewed on the planning board section of the town's website. For more information or to obtain a digital or hard copy of the application, contact the planning office by phone at nine seven eight. Four six five zero eight six two, extension three one two, or by email at planningboard@townofnewbury.org. All persons interested in, or wishing to be remotely. At the designated time. Heard relative to the proposed subdivision and invited to participate in the hearing remotely at the designated time from their computer tablet or smartphone. At HTTPS colon double forward slash US zero two. Web dot zoom dot US forward slash J forward slash eight three two seven one four one. Three zero five six, or by telephone by calling one nine two nine two zero five. Six oh nine nine US and using the meeting ID number three eight three. Two seven one four one three zero five six, or may watch the meeting live on local access cable television. Channel nine or at www.tncTV.org. The Opakos Chair of Newbury Planning Board, published by the Newbury Port Daily News, February fifteenth and February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Leslie, thank you very much. And I think that's his last reading you have to do this evening. Thank you.
Thanks again, Leslie.
All right, here we go. Martha, uh, could you please confirm that you've received all the green cards and the buttons notifications, sheets from the daily news legal ads?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, uh, I'm going to ask the applicant and engineer to present the project and any preliminary responses, uh, to peer review. Uh, and town department comments. So who's gonna kick us off? And guys, thank you very, very much. I know we're about forty minutes behind schedule, uh, but we'll try to keep things moving.
Thanks.
Mister Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Douglas Duchaine representing Gadsden Lane LLC. Uh, with me this evening, Adam True, manager of Gadsden Lane LLC. And Scott Cameron from the Moore and Cameron Group, Inc., are civil engineers on the project. Um, the board will recall, we did appear before you, um, a few months back on a preliminary review of this project. Uh, which resulted in a favorable decision on the proposed six lot subdivision. Including a discussion of the waivers that we would be seeking. Uh, we have taken that decision along with its, with the board's determinations and suggestions. And have, we have developed the definitive subdivision plan before you tonight for consideration. I think you'll recall, we had proposed, uh, reduced roadway size and cul-de-sac size to allow the project to better blend. Into the many natural features of the site, while at the same time being protective of the natural resource areas. Uh, in the, located at the rear of the project. So I think, um, I hope you will see that the project we are proposing in definitive form is, uh. Uh, is significantly in, in, uh. Significantly matches what we did discuss with the board and, and that we have taken your suggestions and comments into consideration. So. Uh, with the board's permission through you, Mister Chairman, I'd, I'd ask, uh, Scott Cameron to provide the board a, uh, brief overview of the. Proposed definitive subdivision.
Thanks, Greg. Hello, Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board and, uh, the public in attendance tonight. Uh, thank you for having us tonight. Uh, for the record, my name is Scott Cameron with the Moore and Cameron Group. Uh, through the chair, uh, would it be okay for me to share my screen?
Sure, I think Martha's already co-hosted you.
Perfect. Yo. So, um, I'll try to, uh, be as brief as I can, uh, through my presentation, uh, you know, in this format. Um, uh, but again, I do want to thank you all for having us tonight and, um.
Hi, how are you? Okay, thanks. Let me, um, add Lucy. Okay, hang on. Yeah, I can, I can add Dad or you can do speakerphone.
Martha, we're gonna need to do a little.
Yeah, I'm trying to find out who that is, cause I don't have a full gallery in front of me.
I don't either. I'm trying to see as well.
Perfect timing, as I put up the plans and minimized all the, the, the video feeds.
Yeah.
So, uh, uh, again, uh, kind of marrying, uh, Doug's, uh, initial comments, this was, uh, presented initially to the board. Uh, in a preliminary application, in which we looked at a few different scenarios for development of the property as a subdivision. Um, and we looked at, uh, kind of a conventional layout, uh, which would be your no waiver, um, you know, full width roadway. Uh, kind of, uh, the, the lollipop shape, uh, more customary road. And we looked at kind of a reduced width, kind of just shrinking that back, but still a typical shape. And then we kind of looked at a design, uh, that I've described as more of a teardrop, uh, design, which was a little more, uh, unique in that, you know. One of the, the, the big factors that we wanted to consider with this property is, uh, in particular, there's some, uh, some kind of unique. Uh, ledge outcroppings through it. It's kind of a, you, you don't see this type of a rock, uh, in too many plays. It's, it's kind of a, um. It's kind of got a whitish, whitish hue to it and also preservation of what, what we're able to determine were some of the. Uh, viable mature trees, uh, that were on the part property, mainly, uh, white oaks and, uh, a large walnut tree. Um, and we did do a site walk and had a look at this, uh, during the preliminary process, uh, with the board, uh, so you get a feel for it. Um, in, in addition to, uh, you know, these considerations. Throw, we're also looking at the overall site design, which I'll get into in a moment. Uh, I'm just gonna zoom in here briefly. Uh, we did provide you with an existing conditions plan. Uh, showing, uh, the, the perimeter of the seven, approximately seven point three acre property. Um, it is consistent, uh, currently of two existing single family dwellings. Uh, which situated, uh, on high road. And then behind each, there is a rear parcel of land, uh, that is not built upon. Um, these four parcels or tracks make up the seven point three acres, uh, of the locus. Uh, we did locate, uh, the trees that were on the property. We located, uh, the, uh, ledge outcroppings that were, uh, primarily around the road area. Uh, we show in the plan also the, uh, the areas where we conducted soil testing. As you imagine, the, the bedrock, you see it on the surface. So we did have to get, uh, very specific where we were testing. We did, we did quite a bit of testing out there that was witnessed by the board of health. And the board's, uh, peer review consultant, uh, Joe Swaka. Um, so all this information shown in the plan and the soil testing results are also included at the end of this plan set. I'm not gonna go through that, but where we did find soil was really well drained soil. Uh, no groundwater apparent, um, and very, you know, very suitable for onsite wastewater disposal. Uh, going through, uh, in the rear of the parcel, uh, we did have the wetlands delineated by DeRose Environmental Consultant. There's wetlands in the rear of the property. Uh, they kind of come up along the side lot line here, uh, represented by flags, A one through A forty-nine. Uh, there's an area of bordering vegetated wetland and at the rear of the property that turns into, uh, salt marsh. There is also on the property, a hundred year flood zone, which is coastal. This is, uh, considered land subject to coastal storm flowage. Under the Wetlands Protection Act, that would be kind of the technical term for it, but it's a hundred year flood plain, uh, which runs, uh, at about elevation thirteen. Uh, across the back half of the property. And we also located, uh, the great marsh, uh, area of critical environmental concern, ACEC. The acronym for that, uh, which, uh, occurs up to elevation ten, uh, in, in the lands, uh, tributary to the marsh. Uh, and show, so we showed that it's elevation ten contour, uh, on the plans as well. Uh, the wetlands have a hundred foot buffer zone associated to them, which would give jurisdiction to the constipation commission. If I'm talking too fast, just please let me know. Um. The next page in the plan set is the lotting plan. So this is your geometric, uh, design for the lots and the road. Uh, the calculations appear in this plan as prepared by Mike Sergi, uh, who was a professional answer surveyor with, uh, the Moore Camera Group. Um, this plan shows the four lots, uh, the one acre, uh, areas. They meet the contiguous upland area requirement. Uh, fronted, and this plan also shows how the existing homes, uh, at two seventeen and two twenty-one will retain their frontage on. High road and their addresses, uh, and corresponding driveways. So the frontages for these two lots would remain on high road as is. And the frontages for the, the new homes, the four new homes would occur off of the new Gadsden Lane Road, which is the subject of the application before you tonight. The next plan you're set, this is more of the detailed site plan. So this is where we got into a little more, uh, engineering from what you saw initially on the preliminary plan. But a very similar shape. We had done quite a bit of work, legwork on the preliminary plan and trying to shape this. So as you come in from high road, uh, you would have a thirty foot, uh, radius, which is your mass DOT radius coming into the site. Uh, that's what they require. Uh, it's a twenty-two foot wide, uh, paved road that would come in. Uh, and as you approach, uh, the, the turnaround, uh, in this teardrop shape. Uh, a dri- driver would have the option of taking a right, uh, to go in this direction or continue on straight, uh, as a two lane road. Uh, you can see the shape of it. We, uh, did shape this around, uh, the trees that we are intending to save. Uh, the first tree is a mature walnut tree, uh, that, uh, Adam True, uh, already actually came in and, uh, the tree was rather stressed. There was another, uh, evergreen tree growing up right against it. The stump is still there, uh, but it was really, uh, impacting, you know, about half of the walnut tree footprint. So he, he took the evergreen, the ever, evergreen wasn't doing well. So he took that down to kind of expose the side of it closest to the road. Uh, so that could get, could kind of grow back and, and flourish. Uh, and then there are mature white pine, uh, white oak trees that are preserved. Uh, mainly around the cul-de-sac area and see with the, with the final design we have here, which we took into consideration, uh, grading. Uh, and mo- most specifically the fire truck turning movements to make sure we can get a fire truck around the, the, the turnaround. Uh, it did result in us having to, we, we would be losing one of the trees here, uh, that we had hoped to save. Uh, it just rolled too tight. Um, but we are preserving the other trees around it, uh, and, and most of the vegetation that was in this area, um. Uh, previously was, uh, pretty well dominated by invasive species. You could really even, it was real difficult to even walk through it. So a lot of the trees were not in great shape out here. Um, and so we feel we've, we've, we've taken the time and actually gone out and, and preserved what, what trees we think remain. And these are. Um, healthy, uh, white oak trees and that, and again, that was, uh, a, a big consideration of the design. They, they vary in caliber from about eight inches to twelve inches. So they're younger, uh, they're still younger trees, but healthy. Uh, and then you also see with these gray block, splotches are the, uh, the ledge outcroppings. And we're, we're working our way, uh, as best we can around that. There is one small one here, um, but the lots, uh, what you, you would have this experience. Coming into the, the, the neighborhood, uh, with these, I think, what wanted to be very distinguishable, uh, rock outcroppings and some of the mature trees. Mixed in with, uh, newer plantings to kind of supplement and create more of a harmonious, uh, streetscape as you come down through development. So we did space. Uh, a total of twelve new trees, uh, along the roadway, uh, situated in the front yards of the lots. Uh, we also include in the plans, the conceptual designs for the lots themselves. Uh, Adam's done quite a bit of work, uh, already. Uh, a lot of times you'll see on, on subdivision plans, just, uh, boxes put on the plans because a lot of times you don't have the actual architectural designs, uh, done at that point. Uh, Adam's actually gone ahead and designed, uh, three of the four lots, uh, already. So this is actually a, a decent representation of what they're going to actually look at like. Uh, on the ground and, and it helped us, uh, also in setting the locations for septic systems. And you see, we've placed these areas, which are the, the boxes. And areas where we have the soil testing, uh, on the site as well as the, the proposed wells, uh, for each lot, making sure we can meet the, uh, the hundred foot radius requirements. For the wells, uh, to the septic systems, uh, stormwater management on this. Uh, we are taking, you know, the whole theme of this is trying to minimize, uh, impact, uh, to the property. So. Uh, low impact design would be, uh, the terminology that, that we use. And you can find that in some what a handbook in, in your regulations. Uh, so the design of this project, uh, is taking that into consideration. Uh, low impact means we're trying to preserve, uh, existing grades. Topography as much as possible. We're trying to minimize the reliance on, uh, proprietary or, uh, structural. Stormwater management practices, pipes, catch basins, things of that nature. We're trying to minimize and we're trying to reduce the overall, you know, kind of footprint. Uh, that, that oftentimes kind of a, uh, you can picture a larger detention pond, uh, would have quite a bit of sprawl associated with it. Uh, you're clearing forest to create stormwater management where we, we may, may or may not need it. So in this case. Uh, the way the, the road is engineered is it is super elevated, uh, so it would be a, a two percent cross slope on the road, not too steep. That's about your, uh, your handicap. Uh, tolerance for, for handicap parking spaces, so relatively flat, but enough to drain, uh, stormwater across the road. And there would be a swell on one side of the cul-de-sac that would come down to a low point between, uh, lots three and two. And then on the other side, uh, the swell would be on this side of the road, uh, coming down just for the, the, the. The kind of turnaround portion to that same low point where it would continue on between the two lots. And then we did add a single. Um, what's called a level spreader. So this is just, it, it would be a flat piece of granite curb that's laid down level. So as the, the water would come down, the swell would hit this and kind of evenly disperse over that spreader. Uh, so that it, it, it promotes, uh, more of a sheet flow instead of concentrated channel flow. And that's, that's good for, uh, promoting groundwater recharge. Uh, avoiding scour, erosion, things of that nature. Uh, so it, it's all very passive and, uh, low impact. Uh, from, from that point of the level spreader, uh, the water would distribute and continue on the same path that is going today in the existing condition. And that is directly down towards the back of the property, uh, which is where it intercepts the land subject to coastal storm flowage or the flood plain. Uh, which is a tidally influenced flood plain. In this case, uh, one of the benefits of being, uh, uh, against the, uh, tightly influenced. Uh, uh, discharge point is that we don't care so much about mitigation of runoff, uh, because. Uh, the way we look at it is where it's the Atlantic Ocean. So it's kind of, we kind of assume that's an infinite water body that we can drain to. And that helps us avoid having to clear what could be another half an acre of forest in this area, uh, simply to construct a detention pond. Uh, which wouldn't, wouldn't be needed. Uh, so that was one of the, kind of the benefits of the location of this, uh, is not having to do that. As far as the other considerations on the stormwater runoff, again, by promoting sheet flow in the swell, uh, we're promoting groundwater recharge. There is a lot of bedrock around the property, so in areas where, uh, it can get into the ground, it will, um. And, uh, the swale is also. And the swale is also providing your treatment of the stormwater runoff. So you'll see called on the plans, there are check dams along the edge of the season will just be shallow, very flat kind of gravel, just to kind of slow down the water and can you promote sheet flow, but also to help remove any trapped sediments, which the sediments typically contain the majority of any, any possible pollutants that would be in the stormwater runoff. So with the design for the, for the most part, we're getting really, really close to fully complying with the stormwater management standards. So I would say to the maximum extent practicable, which is the terminology in the stormwater management handbook, we are, we are, we are meeting the spirit of that because going to, I guess, if we're, we're complying with 90% of the requirements, but we're saving ourselves a half an acre of additional site work, more fill alteration, kind of everything we're trying to avoid with this design. It doesn't seem worth it to go for that additional 10%. And the stormwater management handbook provides some relief on that for smaller projects such as this. Projects between five and 10, creating between five and 10 homes. In this case, we're after discussions with, with Martha in our pre-application review, even though we're only creating four new homes as to existing, we're looking at it as six total. So the, 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 the standard for, for stormwater management in that size project is to the maximum extent practicable. And I think we talked a little bit about this in the preliminary phase. The fully compliant plan creates so much more alteration, so much more impact environmentally. It kind of seems like we're doing more, more bad than good with respect to the design goals of minimizing the environmental footprint. I will finally kind of get to closing with the Latinx sheet, which is the roadway profile. I'll remind, you know, anybody that's watching or board members that when you look at a profile on a roadway plan, it looks, this looks like you're driving through a mountain pass like the King Angus Highway. It's not the case. We exaggerate the profiles four times vertically for scale to help see the, the roadway profile for construction purposes. This is kind of an older back before computers and we use everything digitally to lay everything out. You used to take a scale and have to go out there and, and measure off the plan and try to figure out how to build this vertically using you kind of analog techniques. So we still carry that, that, that aesthetic through, although I would question the, the real value of it today, given the digital world. But you can see in the profile, we actually call out the grades here. So 2.96, 4.6%, 5.5%, 3.9%, 1.5%. And you can see the dashed lines here are the existing grades, kind of the center line and left and right of the, the road. And then the saw line would be your post finish grade. We're very close to meeting that existing grade of the property. And the slopes are not steep, you know, our, our steep point is 5.5%. That's just a hair over what, what a sidewalk threshold would be. You know, certainly not, it wouldn't be anything really noticeable for any drivers or even people walking up and down the road as, as a steep road. This would be relatively flat and follow the topography. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. And again, the vertical curves and the design of the road all, all meet the, the safe, the safe design standards. I'll finish by closing. We did receive the initial review from Joe. We are going through that. I will say I'm not prepared to fully respond to it yet tonight. If there's specific questions, I can do my best to answer them. But I would like an opportunity to kind of fully go through it, digest the comments and then, and possibly have a conversation directly with Joe. I think we'd have a better use of our time if, if both the town's representative and the applicants representative were at Harvard on the, on design comments. We also did all receive from staff today that Martha sent out. I've gone through those. Again, I haven't had a chance to fully digest everything. I think the only thing I will note from Deb Rogers, she did, and Joe also commented on it too with the, the boxes that we show for the septic system locations are, even though they're in the soil testing locations, they are further away than what they had expected. I'll just let the board know that these were, the boxes were just reservations for areas where we can potentially put a field because we know that the soil there. These systems would be designed in a later phase of the project and full compliance with Title V. But because the comment was raised by Deb and Joe, you will see on the next iteration, the plans, the, what, what I would consider more of a preliminary design. So be more detail that I fully expect will meet their, or address their concerns with that. And I think, again, thank you tonight. I'm happy to walk through some of the waivers too. We did include the waiver request. There weren't as many as I think we had anticipated in the preliminary process. I'm happy to do that now, Mr. Chair, or we can kind of push that to later.
They will be here and I think we'll have to visit them again. So we can do it at another time if that's okay with you, Scott.
Sure, sure thing. Yep. Just if anything changes during the peer review process and the board comment, you know, we might, we might adjust these during, during the fine tuning of this.
Okay. And I appreciate you touching on the comments from both conservation and Board of Health and the ability to, to look at those in depth as well as work and come back to us with some more discussion points. Wonderful. Hey, one, one quick question. Did you indicate the road was going to be two way? At one point I thought we were talking about a one way design.
Yeah, we, we looked at a one way design for the cul-de-sac and ultimately driving it was the emergency vehicle access. We wanted to make sure that everyone is fully comfortable with, with the ability of a truck to get in and turn around. And this is the full, the biggest truck that everybody has is engineered. So we ended up going for just the, the 22 foot width throughout the whole thing. We had talked about going down to a 20 foot in the cul-de-sac and doing it as a one way to save just a little, you know, we're saving two feet of pavement over the, over the, you know, the diameter for the circumference of the cul-de-sac here, but we're sacrificing the safe turning. And ultimately I felt it was going to be really hard to enforce. I mean, I, I, I live, I used to live on a full cul-de-sac, which was one way. I don't think a single time I went the right way. The shorter, just to, just to cut out, you know, because I lived there. So we just want with safe again, I, I, you know, if you know, for me, I do like to kind of idiot proof the design. So we don't have as much worry long-term for enforcement and oversight. So we try to make it as user friendly. And even if somebody is trying to cut corners or do something, it's, it's not an issue.
Okay. Beautiful. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. What I'd like to do is just kind of quickly go through to see if any board members have any questions this time as to what's been presented. So Larry, do you have any questions or comments at this point in time?
Well, as, as to the teardrop shape on the road, I remember we had a very helpful site visit a couple of months ago, and I think that makes perfect sense, given the topography out there. And I'm sorry to come at you out of left field on this, but something that only occurred to me today when I was reviewing this and I missed it on the preliminary plan. But are you creating a zoning problem with the house at 217? It looks like you've got a side setback under three feet. And I believe we have an opinion from council and I assume that's grandfathered. I think we have an opinion from council that when you, under these circumstances, if you redraw the property lines, then you lose that grandfather status. Martha, can you help me with that?
Oh yeah, there's actually been some discussion about this. And Doug may be able to chime in or Adam, there has been some discussion about going to the ZBA. I mean, there's recognition of this issue, going to the ZBA and requesting a variance or worst case possibly reconfiguring the garage, which is, you know, the portion of the house that's close to the property line. Doug may be able to address if there's any, any further thinking on this or what their, what their plans are.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In fact, we, we did. We did discuss this issue and with both town council and the building inspector. And it's my recollection that there was a determination that where we were not changing the frontage, nor were we changing any of the pre-existing non-conformings and that all we were doing to this lot was adding land to it to eliminate the pre-existing non-conformance of the lot itself. It will now be fully conforming. That there would not be a need to seek a variance, although we did, we did agree that if, if, if the ultimate determination from the building inspector with the help of the council is that a variance is needed, we would seek the variance from the zoning board of appeals. I will, I will verify that for the board before we meet next. But there is a resolution to that issue. You are right, Mr. Murphy, that we do have a pre-existing very close side lot line issue.
Okay. As long as you're aware of it.
Thank you, Larry. Anything else, sir? Larry?
No.
Okay, beautiful. George?
No questions.
Beautiful. Thank you, George. Leslie?
No questions.
Okay, great. Thanks, Leslie. Woody?
I don't have any questions.
Right now. Thank you, Woody. Mary?
I don't have any.
Okay, great. At this point in time, what I'd like to do is see if there's any public comment or any public question. So we'll probably take down the screen sharing if we could, just so we can get back to our Hollywood, Hollywood square appearance. Okay. And Martha, do we have any public questions or public comments that you are aware of? So this would be a time in a public hearing, if there's anyone in the, in the public that would like to make a comment or ask a question. This would be the time that we would do that. And we would ask for name and address when you would do that.
Let's see, Carolyn has raised her hand.
Okay, Carolyn, great. First name, last name and address. And you need to unmute yourself first. Thank you.
Carolyn Lucy, 221 and a half, High Road. Earlier, it was mentioned that 220, the addresses 221 and 217 would keep their addresses the same. But we were told earlier that address 221 would change to 219 and 221 and a half could be changed to 221. So I would just like confirmation on what is happening with that.
Yes, I can tell you that I am going to direct that to Martha Taylor because she probably knows more than I do about that, that piece of it. But appreciate the question and the concern, Carolyn.
Yeah, this is something that's actually a subject of discussion quite some time ago. When 221 and a half was, was built. Because that would, 221 would have been the appropriate address for that. And so we did discuss that at some point in the future, change would be made to make that 217, the existing house 217 and 221 and a half, 221. So and I think that was mentioned to Adam or Doug or Scott at some point early in the process, but that is something that should be done.
Okay.
It's a recognized issue.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to make a comment or ask a question?
Yeah, it's 223 High Road. Mary Ann Shan Spatfuli.
Okay, okay, Mary Ann. The floor is yours.
And again, I apologize if before I'm trying to get a sense of what the town's perspective is on development. This develop, this development is right up against my property line. So number one, again, not to focus on the trees. All those trees were cut down and I don't understand the feedback from the, the engineer that there are trees left. I'm right there. And there aren't. They're very little. There's next to nothing. So I want to understand that. Number two, these houses are abutting my property, like really up against my property line. Not all of them. I think it's two houses that are really right up against the line, the property line for me. I'd like to understand that. I'd like to understand the ledge where there's enormous ledge there. Are they blowing that out? What are they doing? I'd like to understand the light mitigation, noise mitigation. I'd like to understand where the animals that used to go to those four, five, six acres. They're kind of coming to my house now. I have more deer than I care to talk about and eating my, eating up my plants and everything else. And I really like the deer. But what's that? What, you know, what are the? How, how is the development dealing with that? And at, at the end of the day, why did the trees get cut down and nobody talk to anybody? So it's in the past. I get that. But I want to, I, I don't want to have to hire a lawyer to protect my rights. So what kind of privacy screens will be developed? What, what plants will be put up against the property line so that I continue to have privacy? And why did I not really know about this? One last thing. The post person put the, put the, the notice to this meeting in our mailbox and my neighbor, put my neighbor's notice in my mailbox instead of coming to our property to say, hey, that, you know, this is a, here you go. It's from the UBS. You have to sign this. And so that's not your issue, but it's, there's not been a lot of good communication around this. I've talked to Martha about this more than once. And I know there was an emphasis on the trees today, but they're gone. So I'm not hyper focused on the trees, but I want to understand how did that happen? How's, do I get privacy on, along my property line? How does this, the development get built out? And what about noise, dirt? Light mitigation, once it's built, noise mitigation, all of that. I don't have any idea and no one has talked to me. So I kind of like to have a little bit more information around the development. Thank you.
Mary Ann, I appreciate your comments and concerns. Yes, ideally in a, in a situation when an applicant is coming before for a project like this, usually there isn't any done. It's usually something that's held off on until everything can be identified and the, the project can be laid out. So unfortunately, as you said, that, that did happen. And I think it's incumbent upon the applicant to reach out to you. And we've asked the applicant when we did one of our sidewalks to speak with all the abutting neighbors to try to address any concerns. And Adam, I'm going to put that right to, to you to facilitate that process and to work with your neighbors in a manner that might create mitigation or, or address some of the concerns. So that this, this process can try to be as appreciated and as understood. And I think we conveyed that to you when we did our sidewalk. And I think you're here, Adam, right? Is Adam True still here?
He is here. He's muted right now.
Okay. So I'm just going to direct that to you, Adam.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've noted your comment and I'll make sure, here's Adam.
Yeah, because video feed is broken, but okay. Yeah, I'd like to respond. So I believe have met with Mrs. Speck Spatfuli three times now.
No, that's not actually Adam. That's not true, but go ahead.
Okay. Everyone, hold on. What I do not want to have is I'm not going to have a he said, she said sort of thing. You want to make a comment, you go through the chair. At this point in time, the chair has asked a question to Mr. True. And that, and I'm asking Adam to address that because this was a concern that the board had when we did our sidewalk to make sure the conversations were going on with all of the neighbors.
If I might just say this, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I, what I was trying to say is we're in the midst of COVID. I'm working from home. And so Adam showed up twice, but I was on business calls and I was unable to have a conversation with him. And I asked him to please email me and call me so that I could schedule a time that we could have a conversation. That never happened. I never, and there was no sidewalk or anything like that. So I will let Adam speak, but that's the background. Thank you.
Thanks. So Adam, I'm going to kind of ask that you try to facilitate a communication to see if there's some remediation that can be done so that this can go forward without conflict. I think that's the best way to approach it. And again, I just want to try to keep the meeting organized so that we can all appreciate that. Does that sound fair, Adam?
Oh yeah, that sounds fair.
No, thanks so much. And Doug, I appreciate your, your popping in and making note of that situation for me. Thank you. Is there any other public comment or opportunity for, for questions from anyone?
But I'm sorry, it's Mary Ann again, but I don't have any answers to these questions. No one has ever responded to me. I sent questions in September, October. No one has ever responded to me. I sent questions in September, October. I don't have any answers. So I'm not trying to be difficult. This is the property next door. They have a right to develop their property, but I also am a taxpayer. And I also have an obligation and a right to protect my property too. So I have no, I have not, I've not gotten any response on anything. And yes, Martha has responded to me and provided some input, but it has been broad and it's not been related to the development. Number one. Number two, the name of the development, Gadsden. I mean, no disrespect to the family here, but that has a very negative. In today's world, that has a negative. Whatever. It, it has more than one meaning. It's her family's background, her family's name. But it also has a very negative background if you're a person of color. So that bothers me too. I brought that up. I have gotten no feedback, none.
Okay, okay, Mary. We just started this public hearing, so.
Understood.
Chairman?
As this board goes forward, information is, questions are asked of the board. The board appreciates those, recognizes those, documents those. We direct the applicant to address, so the board has asked the applicant to address this. Doug has, has record of that in our conversation. And so now I'm going to put it on to the applicant to address some of, to address your concerns and to engage the conversation, understanding that the board has now requested that. Okay? I think that's a good way to get started from the board's perspective.
Mr. Chairman, I will, in addition to Adam reaching out and opening a dialogue. I have, I think I've taken copious notes as to the specific questions that have been asked and I will be providing written responses to those questions.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you. I appreciate that, Mary Ann. Hopefully that'll start the discussion from the public hearing standpoint as the board is addressing this application. Okay?
Okay, let me just finish. Sorry, it is an open meeting. I, I gave a list of 10 questions in September, October. I didn't get any answers on those questions. It would be, I'd really appreciate if I could get answers to each of those questions. And so those should be, have been entered into the board. I provided them, I sent them. And again, I work, I have a job. I was unable to be at that meeting when that was part of the requirements of the board meeting. So I, I've not heard. I'd love to have an answer to each of those questions. And I'm not here to cause an issue, but it is, if this development abuts my property, I'm a taxpayer and I deserve or I would appreciate feedback. So thank you.
Okay.
Peter's Mary's tone. I think it's very important that Adam True get together with Mary Ann and Doug if that's, if that's what he wants to do. But this has got to be resolved initially among the three of them and then figure out from there. But right now I think it's got to, it's got to go to a mediation among the three. They have to have a conversation.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate that comment. Okay, with that said, Martha, do you have any other comments or written comments that need, that are, have been posted?
They haven't been posted yet. We haven't gotten any public comments, written comments so far. And I think most of the other ones that we've received have been mentioned. So Joe Sirwodka's first review letter, conservation commissioner, a letter from our conservation agent, Bill Holt, an email from James Saret, DPW director, a letter from Doug Janver, the fire chief, and the letter from Deb Rogers, our health agent.
Thank you. With that, I want to see if there's any other additional questions. All right, do you have any additional questions?
No, not at this point.
George, any additional questions, sir?
All right, no.
Thank you. Leslie, any additional questions?
No.
Beautiful. Woody, any additional questions?
No.
Thank you. Mary, any additional question?
No.
Okay, then I'd like to suggest that we continue this. There's some discussions that need to be taken place. Yes, Gus, sir?
Sorry, I have a question. It's a question solely to help us keep moving forward. Sorry to interrupt. You're, you're training a thought. The question came up in the review by Mr. Swaka about light. We're not proposing any light poles. We don't, at least from our perspective, we don't feel they're necessary for this project. There would be, you know, your typical residential sconces and things on the house, which provide more than enough illumination. I wanted to, I guess, get the, get some feedback if you are prepared to, on the board's position on, on light poles on the street.
I don't know if the board has an opportunity to comment on that since we've just started the discussion with this project. So I would say, you know, I'd ask the board to contemplate your, your question and then we could probably visit it on our next discussion.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. So I think we have a direction as to what we're going to be doing and there's going to be some conversation going on and Doug's going to make sure that that takes place, which will be helpful and address, Mary, your very, your very noteworthy comment, I think, is, is to be recognized. So it's evident that we're going to be continuing this public hearing. Martha, should our date be to follow with our April?
April 7th. Yes, I think that would probably make sense.
All right, beautiful. Then I would entertain a motion that we continue this public hearing to April 7th, 7:15?
I'm moving to continue the hearing.
Wonderful.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Larry? George?
No.
Woody?
No.
Leslie?
No.
Mary?
No.
Okay, on the motion, Larry, how say you?
Yes.
Great. George?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Leslie.
Yes.
And Mary?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Chairs in favor as well. Thanks very much. Everyone, appreciate it and we look forward to good, good conversation, good communication taking place going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good evening.
All righty, great. Okay, let me pop up our agenda. I have to find it now and it's located somewhere in amongst my, my, that was in a PDF format, right, Martha? No.
Actually, it's a word.
It was a word, okay.
Most recent one was a word.
Good, there it is. So public hearings, let's see, old business at 8:55 and here we are at 9:48. Actually, new business. I see new business. I see none. Is that correct, Martha?
That's, yes, that's correct.
So old business, we have proposed zoning amendments for spring 2021 for town meetings, special permit regulations, review of revised language, public hearing dates. Okay, Martha, you want to drive this for a little bit?
Sure. So as a board knows, we did refer the proposed zoning amendment language regarding special permits to the select board for them to refer the language back to the planning board for public hearing. During this discussion at the select board meeting, one of the select board members, select board member, Hevy, expressed some concern about deleting language that's in our existing special permit regulations regarding public hearing and a butter notification. And even though all of that is laid out very clearly in Master General Law 48, sections nine and 11, she felt that it was important to, to keep that language in there. So ultimately, the select board voted to refer the proposed zoning amendment back to the planning board for public hearing, but with some modifications, so to keep the existing language and then add the criteria and the conditions paragraphs. So what I sent to you all was basically the redline version and then a clean version of what they voted on. I have reviewed that with town council. You know, ultimately, I think we would still like to get language that was, you know, similar to what was originally proposed, but this, this takes care of the major issues and the rest could be addressed during the recodification of our zoning.
Okay, so.
And I do have the clean version, if you want me to pull that up on the screen.
Great.
So let me try to do that. I just have to find out which one it is. So are you able to see that?
We are. Can you make it a little larger by chance?
I can certainly try to do. Whoops, a little too big, huh? This is being a little finicky.
Yeah.
Let me just expand this.
That looks perfect.
So basically, it retains the portion about procedures, which is this large paragraph here about, you know, the timeframe. Does note the selectmen, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals. Notification, public hearing. Talks about laps. It makes some reference to actually some, some uses that are exempt under chapter 48, section three, so that that stays as is. And then the other portion that was going to be kept in is the granting authority about designating with a five-member planning board, designating a associate members for, to participate in special permit hearings. Town council did recommend adding the sentence that is in bold highlight here, which basically says that if no other body has been designated under the table of use regulations or elsewhere in the, in the zoning, the ZBA would be the special permit granting authority by default. So that was her suggestion to leave that in or to add that. And then this adds the criteria that we had talked about and the provisions for conditions that we had talked about.
Okay.
So it remain, it deletes all the, the other language that was originally proposed.
All right. So if I understand correctly, Martha, what we need to do is we need to set a date for public hearing for this, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think we've reserved the date of March 24th for a public hearing for this. And I would welcome a motion, set that date and time and Martha, would that time be?
I think we had said 7:15 for the other ones. So the time, I think we were talking about seven, I'm sorry, 6:45 zoning.
Great. So I entertain a motion for the, to set a public hearing for March 24th, that's 6:45 PM for this item.
Motion to set a public meeting for the proposed zoning amendment for March 24th at 6:45.
Beautiful. And it's seconded. All right, is there a discussion on the motion, Larry?
No discussion.
George?
I think he may have muted himself.
Might have. Woody?
No discussion.
Leslie?
No discussion.
Mary?
No.
Okay, on the motion, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody?
Yes.
George? Leslie?
Yes.
Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Beautiful. And chairs in favor as well. Great. Perfect. So we're set with that.
Okay, so that, that is for this language as was referred back to the planning board.
Yes.
And there will still be an opportunity for, you know, potentially for some, some tweaks, but I will word the, word the legal ad with this language in mind. And the schedule that I've discussed with Tracy is that she would then, the select board will vote the following week on the 30th on the warrant. So this is the language that I'll furnish for her as a placeholder in the warrant as that's developed.
Okay, perfect. Let's see. Do I understand next would be the financial, financial report? Okay.
I, I, I did send a draft of some, some rules or regulations regarding submission deadlines and agendas, but we may want to hold that off until the next time. It's a pretty rough draft, so it might be good for everybody to, to review that.
All right.
Unless you want to go over it tonight.
If you'd like to go over it tonight, we could. We want to hold it for our next meeting.
It's entirely up to you and the board members, given the hour.
Let's hold off until our next meeting, I would think. How's that sound? Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. I don't think, Martha, we haven't seen this, have we?
I did email it at the very end of the day, along with the, so nobody's had a chance to review it.
No, I haven't seen it, so. Make any sense.
Yep, let me do the financial report for February 2021 payroll and invoices authorized payroll warrants for town planner. PR 21-17 for pay period ending 2/13/2021, PR 21-18 for pay period ending 2/7/27/21. Planning board expense invoices, the Verizon wireless, planning board iPads, who's 21, peer review invoices, escrow account, Joseph Walker for first for Three Newbury Port, German bike on 2/321 and for 200 point road, 2/25/21. And that takes care of our financial report. Now let me get back to our agenda. Our agenda was in a Word document. And I have up that hopefully over here. I can open it back up. Oh, I can't. Martha, what's next on our agenda until I can get there?
So then the next item on the agenda is the planning director's report, but again, I think maybe given the hour, there's nothing earth shattering, so.
Okay. And then as far as reports go, is there anything from ZBA, Larry?
No, the next regular meeting is March 18th, so I don't have anything tonight.
Beautiful. MBPC?
MBPC, actually, the planners, well, a couple of things. The commissioners meeting, they did vote on the, the MBPC budget for FY '22 and the town's assessment, which has gone up about $63. They are considering a, a new sort of aerial photography vendor called Nearmap to replace pictometry. And so Gerard has given a presentation on that. It's, it's being considered. And I think they'll be hoping to make a decision at some time soon. Everybody's sort of reviewing the, the different features of each to see strengths and strengths and non-strengths. There was a presentation at the planners meeting last Thursday by Chris Klutchman from DHCD regarding housing legislation. You know, there are a couple of things. One is MBTA communities. And we're considered to be one because we've got the train station, you know, right, our border will be required to set up a, basically an area with a certain distance of, of the train station that allows multifamily housing by right. I think it's a quarter mile, I believe. I'm not quite sure. And then there are some other housing-related provisions that would allow for for a simple majority instead of super majority decisions.
And this came out of the governor under COVID emergency?
Well, it, it, it has happened during this time. It's not COVID related. But it's, you know, it's, it's a further effort to develop, you know, mechanisms for affordable housing in various towns.
So maybe we should recirculate that just so the board can refresh on that because that came out a few months back, I think. Is that right?
The MBTA communities portion of it did. The other, the other was not, not strictly connected to that, but I can recirculate that information.
Just so the board can get that, that back on the radar screen. Okay, perfect. Select board, Leslie?
Martha covered a huge portion of it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There was a discussion about a workshop for the emergency egress for Plum Island and sidewalk and to probably be included with CONCOM on the planning board and the fire department and the police department. The select board, if they wanted to participate.
And conservation, I don't think we met since our last meeting. I don't think we did.
Yeah, was that, did I get that pretty much right, Martha?
I, yeah, I mean, that's a, that's sort of a, a, it's kind of a, it's being headed up by the fire chief and the police chief.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Woody.
Who, who comes to the determination that we're an MBTA community or not?
It was in the state. It was, and the state made that determination. I think there are something like 181 MBTA communities or something. And I, I believe it has, has to do with the proximity of the community to an MBTA station. So it doesn't necessarily mean that there's an MBTA station within town.
We used to not be one, right?
Well, this is, my understanding is that this is just kind of a new categorization. So we fit into, in this categorization, we kind of fit into the other group.
Because of, because of the commuter rail, Woody?
Because of the commuter rail, right?
Yeah, see, the only reason why I ask is because when I got hurt, I'll be quick. When I got hurt 11 years ago, I couldn't get the ride and I was told we weren't an MBTA community because we didn't have a train station on the, on the track. You know, it was only Newbury, Fort Riley. So I was told that West, West Newbury and Newbury were MBTA communities at the time, 11 years ago. And I was just wondering maybe if there was some history on when we became an MBTA, MBTA community.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how, how they were designated, but I would, I would guess that it's communities that actually have a train station or, or are very close to a train station in a neighboring community. So it, it, I think they're looking at it probably a little bit differently than they were, you know, in terms of transportation. This is really housing related.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, and I think, yeah, as I indicated, I think CONCOM met prior to our last meeting. Do we have any other business to talk about this evening, Martha?
No, I think that covers it.
Everyone, I want to thank you very much. It was a long meeting and I appreciate starting early to, so we could accommodate the applicants. And that's all we have. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn from my vice chair.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
Wonderful, now any discussion on that, Larry?
No discussion, no.
Any discussion, Woody?
No discussion.
Great, any discussion, Leslie?
No.
And Mary, any discussion?
That's the news and we are out of here.
All right, Larry, how do you say?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Great, Leslie?
Hi, everybody.
And, and Mary? Okay.
Yes, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate the long and patience throughout the meeting, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, everyone.